And I really hope more comes to light.
Yeah, thank you so much, Deepa. It's really important to us to keep Sassy and Anisha's story alive.
You're listening to Here and Now.
It's Here and Now on Radio IQ. I'm Radio IQ News Director David Seidel with you during this spring fund drive, asking for your support for Here and Now, the news you get throughout the afternoon as it develops and deeper context as more details become available. We're on our way to a goal of $80,000 at this point in our spring fund drive. We've got $7,500 to go for today's goal, and we can get there even faster with your new donation because we are matching new donations two to one. That's thanks to current members who've offered to match during our 50th anniversary year. Every dollar you give as a new donor will be tripled. Make that bigger impact right now. You can do it by calling 1-800-856-8900. Go online to radioiq.org, text the word RADIO IQ to 51555, and we thank you very much.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video chat or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
It's Here and Now. Here's a story of cooperation from Denver. In two of the city's mountain parks, about 60 bison roam. Denver also has special park grounds set aside for local indigenous groups. And a few years ago, a few years ago, those groups started working with the city to manage the bison, which are culturally and spiritually important to many tribes. Colorado Public Radio's Isaac Vargas has more.
Over the last 10 to 15 years, William Talboll, who is Cheyenne and Arapaho, has helped manage the ceremonial grounds. He knew Denver Parks managed bison herds, but...
The Denver mountain parks never worked with the Denver Indian community in terms of harvesting a bison or actually inviting us to the table, you know, with their bison program.
Talboll started talking to Scott Gilmore with Denver Parks and Recreation about that.
So over the years, we've been building up that relationship by actually just, you know, going out for coffee, going to get something to drink, going to get some lunch, creating a relationship, right?
Historically, when the bison herd numbers started to grow too big, the city would auction animals to the highest bidder. But a few years ago, that changed. About a dozen big woolly brown bison crashed into each other and down a wooded fenced corridor into a white steel trailer. Now, when Denver has more bison than its parks can support, it sends them to tribal communities. These 29 are headed up I-25 to the Wind River Reservation in Wyoming. Denver has been doing this for three years now. Scott Gilmore, who was in on those early bison talks with William Talboll years ago, is happy they worked something out.
For a city, this is, I don't know of any other city that can do this. Who owns bison? You can't do something that you don't have. The federal government has been trying to do this for a long time, but as a city, we have a lot more flexibility.
It took the National Park Service years to start shipping bison it didn't need to tribal governments. Yellowstone National Park bison that used to be slaughtered are now sent to native communities.
The buffalo are part of the land, and so this action allows us to honor that land acknowledgement with action, not just with words.
Danielle Seawalker, with the American Indian Commission, came to see the bison off. She says it's important for tribes to have their own bison herds. She calls them relatives to the indigenous communities that once lived in close harmony for generations.
The Lakota people are, we're buffalo nation. We consider them our relatives, our four-legged relatives. Wherever they went is where we went, and so they're really centric to our culture and our identity and our belief systems.
Since 2021, Denver has transferred a total of 85 buffalo to tribes, including the Arapaho, Shoshone, and Cheyenne. William Talboll, who manages the indigenous ceremonial grounds inside Denver's Daniels Park, says he thinks transfers like these will have a ripple effect.
Bringing back bison to our culture, to our tradition, back to native people where they belong. So what we're doing here today is it's affecting other native people as well. It's bridging the educational gap for the non-native community.
The city of Denver has signed an agreement with local indigenous groups to continue transferring bison to native communities through at least 2030. For NPR News, I'm Isaac Vargas in Denver.
You're listening to Here and Now. Hi, I'm Scott Tong.
And I'm Tanya Mosley. At Here and Now, we leap into the news that breaks between morning edition and All Things Considered.
Dig deeper behind the headlines you've heard and fill your day with fascinating people, plus sports, music, and great books.
That's all worth your support, and we're counting on that support right now. Here's how to help.
You can call 1-800-856-8900. Go online to radioiq.org and hit the red donate button. Check your email. You may have received an email from us. It's an easy way to click the link and donate. Or you can text the word RADIO IQ to 51555. Whichever way you choose, it's important that you take that step from being a listener to becoming a listener contributor to Radio IQ during the spring fund drive. I'm Radio IQ News Director David Seidel. I'm joined in the studio today with Fred Echols.
Dave, I was listening to Here and Now and some of the very interesting stories we've heard so far. I was reminded of a listener I talked to, I would say maybe 10 fund drives ago, five or six years ago, when I was taking pledges on the phone one day, and a lady called to make her pledge, and she said, you know, I have made a list. She said, I made a list one week of all the things I knew that I would not have known if I didn't listen to public radio. There were things that just were not mentioned or reported or touched on anywhere except on public radio. And Dave, as I recall, it was a tremendous list. It was in the dozens of things that the lady said, I wouldn't know any of this if I didn't listen to public radio. And I think that illustrates maybe as well as anything else the breadth of information that folks get listening to Radio IQ and these great public radio programs.
It's, think about all the places that you have been taken through public radio, whether it's the Western US, Western Europe, Western Africa, the voices that you've heard. That kind of perspective, that kind of variety is worth supporting, and it's important that you do it right now during this spring fund drive. 1-800-856-8900. Radioiq.org. Text the word RADIO IQ to 51555. Thanks to James in Charlottesville, Sarah in Blacksburg, Michael in Wise, Ed in Blacksburg, Joyce in Charlottesville. Now it's your turn. Thanks.
Coming soon on The World.
It's been two decades since the US invaded Iraq, and here in the capital, almost everyone you talk to has been touched by the violence that followed. I'm Junior Jafari here in Baghdad to report on where this country is headed 20 years since the US-led invasion.
In and around Baghdad this week on The World. You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ receives support from Gentry Locke Attorneys, committed to outcomes that matter for clients and referring professionals. Offices in Roanoke, Lynchburg, Richmond, and Norfolk. More information at gentrylock.com.
This is Martinez with NPR. One of the things this station counts on to bring you the news are contributions from listeners. One way you can help is to donate a vehicle you no longer need. If you don't need it, donate it.
To donate your vehicle, go to radioiq.org. And thanks.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise.
The Roanoke City Council Session for March 20, 2023 is hereby called order. Now I ask our Clerk, Mrs. Susan McCord, to please call the order.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volsom?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and of course, President. Welcome, everybody, to our first session of today, and we got another one at 7 o'clock tonight. I'm pleased to recognize our council member, Stephanie Moon Reynolds, who will be delivering our invocation today, and following the invocation, I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Moon.
I would ask you all to take any posture that you deem appropriate as I offer this prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, we come once more asking you to invoke your presence among us. We ask you to give us open minds, minds ready to receive your knowledge and wisdom, to do those things that are pleasing in your sight. Let us be tolerant of the thoughts of others, for we never know in what voice you will speak. And finally, I pray that all the business we undertake this day will be in the best interest of our communities. And may all God's people say amen and amen. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. First thing I have is the announcements for today. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. And you can please, please access the city's website at www.roanookva.gov to complete an online application. And all of us here on City Council welcome those citizens who want to step forward and work with us on boards and commissions. And so I would encourage you, if you see something that you're interested in doing or committed that you're interested in serving on, just contact their clerk's office, and they will help you fill out the forms for that process. Very easy, simple process, and we appreciate any, any support and help that we can, because it takes citizens to help us manage this seven-time all-American city. So thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda today is the presentations and acknowledgement. And this is going to be a presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the city pension and pension plan and annual comprehensive financial reports, popular annual financial reports, and the budget document of the fiscal year ending in 2022 to the Department of Finance. Which in essence is saying that we've been recognized for doing outstanding work in, in our area of finance. So I want to, to really ask Mr. Brent Robinson, the Director of Finance, and Amelia Merchant, the Deputy Director of Finance, to meet me at the floor podium. Hey, let me just say that I'm proud of the work that our finance department is doing, and, and thank you all for your commitment and dedication. Your staff, the senior staff, other staff here?
Quite a few.
Well, how do I stand up now?
Well, can we do it a little, we have three groups, I believe, that had three different boards. Maybe if you want to do the budget group first with you.
Let me just say, the Department of Finance recognition for the fiscal year 2021, the city's and pension plan annual comprehensive financial reports, popular annual financial reports, and the budget document for fiscal year 2022 have received certificates of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Financial, Finance Officers Association, GFOA. Isn't that Chris Moore's group? Okay, all right. People are going to check you all out on that to make sure everything's up, but that's great. And so I want to, I allow you all, Amelia and Brent, to come and just identify these certificates and make the presentation. I think it'd be better coming from you all.
Excuse me, sir. If I could say a word or two, it's not often that the accounting group gets recognized. Many times you'll find, I'm one of those included, that we became accountants because we didn't like getting up in front of groups and talking to people and presenting and things like that. I learned along the way, but this is a really big deal in the, in the world of government finance. It is, I saw Mr. Rose here a little earlier. He'll be talking with you a little later. It's very important from Mr. Rose's standpoint that we achieve these awards. It's, it helps in our credit ratings. It helps in what we, what it costs us to issue debt to do our, what we need to do for our citizens. So beyond that, it is a recognition of excellence throughout the country, actually, North America, it's Canada and the United States. So it is a big deal, and these people work very, very hard. As you'll see, there's going to be quite a number of people standing up in a moment, and it does take a village to especially do the financial systems, the reports, and all of the work that goes on throughout the year. So I'm going to, if I could let Amelia introduce the groups, we have to, and I'd like to give the group a hand for the hard work that they do. So thank you very much.
Good afternoon to Mayor Lee and members of City Council. I stand here very proudly today to recognize my finance colleagues as they work very diligently every day to ensure that the finances of the city of Roanoke are handled properly and that they're reported properly. I've been blessed to serve six years on the Standing Committee with GFOA, three years on the Executive Board, and now starting a three-year term on the Nominating Committee. So very blessed to be in that, serving in that capacity. But in terms of the awards that we're receiving and recognizing today, the first one that's in front of me here is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, awarded to our Management and Budget Division that is led by Paul Workman, our budget staff. All of our budget staff?
Yeah, thank you. And we're honored to receive this, and this is actually the 38th year that we've received this. And in honor of that, I brought one of the original plaques that we received. And I know last time, Mayor, you started reading all these years, but I thought I'd make it easy on you. This one says 1986, but actually, we started receiving it in 1984, so I don't know what happened to the other two. We have a whole pile of these in a file cabinet in our office, so we think we're going to probably make a desk out of them someday. But so we're honored to receive this, and the criteria continues to change, and we adapt. And this is sort of our familiar, this is our similar accreditation, if you will. So, but I'll introduce my team. We've got Corey Als House, Budget Business Analyst, Trinity Kaseke, Budget Business Analyst, Lisha Van Buren, Budget Analyst, Ian Haw, Senior Budget Business Analyst. And new to the team is Jason Cromer. He's our Revenue Analyst. So a fantastic team, and I'm honored to work with them.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could they just turn around? Because they're facing, if we could just get a... Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they can be seen also by our viewing audience. Okay, there we are. Thank you. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. There are two more groups. The second group that I'd like to speak about and call forward is our accounting group, who handles our annual comprehensive financial report. And that group has been led by Mary Tally, who is the, has served as the accounting supervisor. And if I could call Mary forward and the staff in the accounting group. And I believe also the accounts payable group is with us today. It's a team effort, along with Cindy Kirby, who serves as our administrative assistant, keeping us all straight.
So we worked really hard this year. 2021 was a bit of a challenge for us. We went through a lot of turnover and transition in the team, but we still were able to get the GFOA award for our annual comprehensive financial report, as well as this is the first year that the accounting team got the award for the PAFR, the first year that we presented the PAFR and got the award. The PAFR. The Popular Annual Financial Award. And so my team members are Marina, she's a general, she's the cash accountant, really. She handles all of that. Eric is fairly new to our team, and he handled a lot of the debt portion and the capital portion. Ami is part of our accounts payable. We wouldn't be able to do this without their help. And then we have Angela Lancaster on the system side. And of course, we couldn't do any of this also without Cindy. She keeps us all straight, looking at getting everything together and helping us with all of that.
We want to share this with our social media, let folks know what a wonderful job you all are doing. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. And our last group that we want to recognize today, and last not being last in importance, because for those who have either retired or have visions of retirement, this is a very critical group, and that being our retirement group. And it is led by Harold Harless, who is our Retirement Systems Manager. And they are also being recognized for both the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, as well as the Popular Annual Financial Report.
Thank you all. This is the 36th consecutive year that we have received the GFOA certificate on behalf of the pension plan. I would like to thank especially my staff here, Kayla Gunter, who is our senior accountant. Kayla does all the heavy lifting relative to the putting this report together, and Chris keeps us straight on a monthly basis, taking care of all the accounting that, of course, helps to put the report together. So they are absolutely a pivotable, pivotal part in this, in this role to, in this achievement. So thank you all very much.
Mayor, there you are. Mr. Mayor, keep your chair. Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
I don't know how I forgot to get over in that.
Just final comment. Just wanted to say thank you for your support and for your encouragement of this group, and we will continue to work to ensure that the finances of the city of Roanoke are appropriately handled and reported on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Any comments, anybody?
Very proud of them.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you. All right. All right, I'm going to ask Councilmember Peter Volsom to join me here. And we're going to, I'm going to ask Councilmember Volsom to read the proclamation from the mayor's office regarding Roanoke Diversity Center Day. Councilman?
Excited to have this proclamation done, and thank you, Mayor, for having it go through your office. Whereas the mission of the Roanoke Diversity Center is to support, educate, empower, and advocate for LGBT+ individuals and groups in the Roanoke region, and to encourage collaborative efforts with the greater community to improve the quality of life for all. The RDC vision is a Roanoke where lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender people are inspired and empowered to lead full and rewarding lives, with the RDC serving as a safe space for all and a catalyst for change within and beyond our community. Whereas the effort to create the Roanoke Diversity Center began in February 2011 with a General Community Interest Meeting. A dedicated group emerged out of that meeting with a comprehensive strategic plan to create an LGBT+ community center in downtown Roanoke. The RDC was granted 501(c)(3) status in August of 2012. The RDC opened its center doors in the basement of the Metropolitan Community Church in February of 2013. In 2020, the RDC moved to downtown Roanoke on the corner of Fifth and Campbell Avenue Southwest. Whereas the Roanoke Diversity Center provides a welcoming, interesting, and safe gathering space for individual support groups and community events, staff at the center provide access to resources by gathering and sharing information about events, organizations, volunteer, and activism opportunities. Staff also provides referrals for services with LGBT-owned and LGBT-friendly professionals, businesses, and organizations in the Roanoke Valley. Whereas the RDC supports the health and wellness by hosting HIV testing, substance abuse prevention, and other programs, in 2017, the RDC created the sports teams, a sports team for LGBT athletes and allies called Blue Ridge Pride Sports. And since 2015, the RDC has housed the Roanoke LGBT+ Memorial Library. Now, therefore, I, Sherman Lee, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, encourages the celebration of 10 years of service to the citizens and do proclaim March 25, 2021. 25th, 2023 as Roanoke Diversity Center Day. And I have Vice President Marissa Yee here to accept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have an open house, free open house on Saturday. Please come out and see what we are about. The 23rd of April, we're going to have a brunch fundraiser on top of the rooftop at the center of the square with entertainment. Please save that date and come check us out. Support us.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You want to picture trash? Waiting on you to finish talking. Are you done? Here we are. Oh, well, let me get my camera back out.
She's the councilwoman.
You ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Beautiful. Thank you.
All right.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Carr will come down and make the next proclamation.
I'd like to welcome Karen McCosky Carney, who's the Executive Director of the Blue Ridge Independent Living Center. Karen, if you'll come join me, she'll receive this proclamation for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas a disability is a natural part of the human experience, that does not diminish the right of individuals to live independently, to exert control and choice over their own lives, and to fully participate in and contribute to their communities through full integration and inclusion in the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of society. Whereas the city of Roanoke encourages and supports the rights of our citizens with intellectual and developmental disabilities to make their own person-centered decisions, to advocate for themselves and express their wants, needs, wishes, and desires, and to receive the supports they need, to be successful, productive, and independent members of their communities. And whereas Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month seeks to educate the community about the rights of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, to live their best lives and be seen not as a person with a developmental disability, but as a contributing neighbor, coworker, church member, classmate, voter, friend, volunteer, and valued member of their community. Now, therefore, I, Joseph L. Cobb, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Sherman Peely, Senior Mayor of the City of Roanoke, call upon all residents to galvanize efforts that will lead our community to create real systems of change, so people with developmental disabilities will enjoy equitable, inclusive lives, and do hereby proclaim March 2023 throughout this great seven-time All-America City as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month.
It was in 1987 when President Ronald Reagan declared that March should be Disability, Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. That was 36 years ago. And certainly, in the last 36 years, we have come a long way, but we have a lot yet to do. So, we appreciate the fact that people with developmental disabilities are living and working and worshiping in the city of Roanoke, but we know there are more individuals who could get back into the community if the community was accessible to individuals with disabilities. So, again, we thank you all for the proclamation, and we look forward to making more improvement in the next coming years. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I think that concludes all my questions. All right, we're now down to the hearing of citizens on public matters. City Council sets this term as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And I'm going to ask our clerk, do we have any citizens signed up?
Yes, we do. We have three speakers, and each speaker will get five minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Our first speaker will be Clay McClintock.
I was getting ready to say good morning, but good afternoon, and thank y'all for letting me speak up. I was asked if I could come here and share about Neighborhood Watch in a positive manner. And this is exactly what I'm here to do. And to get started, most of you can see my green shirt. I'll step out where most of you can see it. This is our logo that was made by one of our block captains. And in the process, the other block captain decided to turn it into a t-shirt. And they did a great job. You can't hardly see it maybe where you're at, but there's a hand underneath the houses and then the eyeball looking over your city, and it says, Noble Neighborhood Watch, Neighbors Helping Neighbors. That's our main point that I'm gonna try to bring forth. I push away from everybody to stay out of the negative part in our meetings. No code enforcement brought up. If there's a code problem, we bring it up with me, the block captains, and the people that have that problem. And we don't need that in our Neighborhood Watch meetings. We're here to deal with crime and to help neighbors help neighbors. We discuss with the fact of code enforcement. We pride ourselves on one point. If it's somebody with high grass, we look at it. How long has it been high? Let's go knock on the door. Is someone in behind that door that's ill? Is someone elderly can't do it? We take a team, we knock on the door. Is there anything we can do to help you? That's our neighbors helping neighbors. We would prefer to help them rather than code enforcement have to come in and charge them to do so. Of course, as we all know, you do have those that bend that law, and they just, you're not gonna help them, and they're not gonna help themselves naturally. Code enforcement has to step in, and I work with them closely to wherever we can. We pride ourselves with someone every month that goes through every street we have and picks up the trash. We keep it off the street. They adopted a street, and that's what their streets are. We also pride ourselves to have a safe, friendly, and a very clean neighborhood. That's our pride. These people that work with me, the block captains and all the people on our team, this is their ideas. I'm just the person that shares them as the president of the group. So, this is where we're at. I also have worked hard. I've got right now 15-plus landlords or owners of homes that work with me. I had one the other day knock on my door and actually let me know what's getting ready to happen in his house. He, they like the fact that we're looking and keeping an eye on things at their house, that nothing's going wrong. And they help me in turn by watching who they either rent to or whatever in this fashion to try to keep the drug problems down. And this is where we become neighbors helping neighbors. On issues that we have, say, for instance, like road problems, drug houses, any other thing that you could probably come up with, all neighborhoods are gonna have problems. We don't try to bring it before City Council for a purpose. You guys have enough on your plates without us having to bring everything to you. So, I have made a point in my time to make a big, long list of as many people that I can out of the city, whether it's the street people, whether it's the police department, whomever, to get contact numbers. We contact them for contact for information, plus for help, and suggestions on how we can handle these things without having to bring it here. I even have each of you guys numbers that I can contact. I don't like trying to come to your office. I'd prefer to, hey, I'll text message you, I'll email you, I'll call you, but we can talk. And we can get more accomplished in that way than me standing here and giving y'all down the hill for what's not going on. So, that's the whole thing. We stand with Antoine Callaway and his agenda with the President's Council. He has helped me in a whole lot of ways. In fact, I'll give you one way. He's helped me. We started out with 200 houses. Just this past year, we decided to extend our group, and we are now 400 homes strong. And we're helping him with, I'm helping him with maybe two other groups that are, one is trying to get started, the other one has already started. And we stay with this, and we talk with each other. So, not only is it ours, we just want to, I wanted to impress the point, that all the city people here that does not have a Neighborhood Watch in their neighborhood, if they find people, have them step up, talk to Antoine. Any of us out here can, can work with the advocates and stuff and help them get started. If they don't know that they have one in their neighborhood, then, hey, we can get the information out, even with a press conference and say, hey, here's one in your neighborhood. Come and join it, see what it's about. But that's one way I know that we can do as a city. Time's up. So, that's all I have. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Let me just say before you go, I tell you, that's, that's music to my ears to hear that. And I want to thank you all for, for doing that in the community. I think it's so important. And give my regards to Antoine for his leadership in that area. And I think it's, you know, I always enjoy citizens coming up and telling us what they can do to help the city. Most of the time, it's reverse of that. But, thank you for that. It's very refreshing, and I appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is James Neet.
Last name again?
Neet, N-E-A-T-E.
First off, I want to thank Mayor Lee and all you council members for all the hard work you put in, because I know it can't be easy. And I appreciate what, what y'all do. I've lived in the city 18 years. I lived in the county 26 years prior to that. The reason I'm here today is the five-cent bag tax. I want to share a few views with you on it. Now, my background, I'm a graduate of Darden MBA program, UVA. I was a controller for 33 years at different companies, Shepherd's Auto Supply, J.M. Turner Company, CMC Plumbing Supply, and six years at the Kroger Warehouse. Right now, we're collecting a tax of five cents a bag. The unfortunate thing is, this is alienating the citizens. It's alienating the employees and the owners of retail establishments. I mean, I had, I had, I had an owner tell me this morning that he had a customer come in, he bought us a bunch, bunch of stuff, and he bagged it up for him, and he told him that, you know, 15, 20 cents, whatever, for the bags. And the customer just got mad and walked out. He lost the sale because of this policy. Now, I think there's a better way of doing this. I mean, in the last year, my real estate taxes has gone up by 10%. I've received an extra charge for garbage. I've received an extra charge for the waterworks. And I understand, I mean, we've got a 50-year-old system. I understand it needs to be repaired, okay? But, wouldn't this be a better solution? We've got, where's, where's the lady? I don't see her. That lady right there, Mr. Mayor? That lady needs a raise. She does. Anyway, she does need a raise. She is doing one hell of a job for the city. But what it works out to, you take the numbers of the revenue that you're getting, and the number of blue recycle cans that we have out there, the charge would be $4 for each blue can. And isn't that a more appropriate way than, excuse my French, pissing off all your citizens? That's about it. I hope y'all will consider making a change.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Neet, I just have a question for you. I believe you've called Senator Edwards' office a couple of times over the past week.
I did.
I think you spoke with my colleague. Has he been ever, been able to connect you with Senator Edwards yet?
Senator Edwards' office didn't call me back. Senator Edwards voted for this in 2020. Mr. Hurt, the Republican out of Blacksburg, he voted against it.
Okay. And I do think my, my colleague did say that he had a phone conversation with you either earlier this week or sometime last week in Senator Edwards' office. And he does plan to get back to you sometime later this week.
Well, you know, what is, what is Edmund's opinion on it now?
Well, to prevent much of it back and forth, I will say that he wasn't supportive particularly of the tax itself. He preferred an entire ban on plastic bags, but the General Assembly only gave them limited options.
Excuse me, sir, but he did vote for it.
He did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Our next speaker is Frida Cathcart.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I wanted to follow up with a meeting that I had with the Economic Development Department. I wanted to find out what had happened with the Parks and Recreation's recommendations to, or actually instructions to City Council and the management to remove the house in Fishburne Park from sale and to work with the people that were interested in fixing up the house. There was a letter sent in 2018 to the Council and the manager's office on April 2022. They had never heard of it. There was a disconnect between city management and the Economic Development Department that left that house for sale instead of working with the people, the coalition that I had put together to fix up the house. That was the response that I got back from the director of the Economic Development Department that I met with, that they had never received that. So, that's really frustrating. I want to remind you of the city charter that says, "With the ever-increasing scope of operations of the government of the city, it is obvious that the level and quality of service by the city to its people cannot be of the quality and quantity which is both expected and deserved by the people without the active support of many of its qualified and concerned citizens. One of the best ways of involving such persons in the promotion of the best interests of the city and its citizens is to invite them to share some of the responsibilities and opportunities for serving on one or more of the several authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by the City Council. In order to obtain the best qualified and dedicated people to serve on such bodies, it is incumbent upon the council to maintain a close relationship with them and to give careful and thoughtful consideration to advice and recommendations coming to it from such bodies. There is no surer way to destroy the effectiveness of such a body than to receive a file with thanks and neglect a recommendation from it." You know, the timeline that you all received before you did the extension recently on the contract, because the couple is obviously going to be out of compliance with what the contract was, there was no mention of these letters on that. That's why I went to find out, like, where did that timeline come from and what happened? That's what led me down that path to meet with them. During that meeting, I was also really shocked that path, to meet with them. During that meeting, I was also really shocked when the assistant city manager that was there responded to my question about why council was meeting behind closed doors to discuss the house when, we had sent also multiple letters asking them not to do that. And he said it was because it was normal to meet behind closed doors when it came to real estate. It is shocking to think of park land, public park land being referred to as real estate. From the Investopedia Government-Owned Property Definition Example and Property Types quotes, "Some government-owned properties are intended for public use and may be funded by taxation. A public good, for instance, is a product that one individual can consume without reducing its availability to others and from which no one is deprived. Examples of public goods include law enforcement, national defense, sewer systems, libraries, and public parks. As those examples reveal, public goods are almost always publicly financed. It's not real estate." I bring that up because this is really important when it comes to the prosperity of our city. I already know of one developer that was looking at a blighted house in another section of the city that was near a public park, but has pulled back from that because of fears that suddenly the city's going to be treating public land as real estate. Because when you have real estate that's actually real estate near a public park, it pumps up the property values. It makes it more of an incentive to do. But when you turn that around, it de-incentivizes people to make those investments. That is very important. I also wanted to say that our neighborhood reached out to plan a special meeting with the couple to talk about their plans for the house and the park. Instead of working with us, they've planned a meeting for this Wednesday that is not a good fit for the people in our neighborhood. So, I just wanted to bring those things to your attention. And I'll, I'll be following up later with emails about. It's important to be fair to everybody. That park belongs as much to me as it does to you, as much as to everybody in the city. And it's really important that there's better communication and collaboration when we work with these assets, to be fair to everybody. I appreciate your time. Are there any questions?
No, I would ask Mr. Mayor if we could call on Mr. Nelson. I think he had something to say.
Mr. Nelson is there?
Thank you.
Director of Economics.
We did meet with Ms. Cathcart last week, last Monday. During that time, we never said we had not heard of the letters. We never said we had not heard of the proposal. And I'm going to stand here so you can see. So, what we told her was, there was nothing in our files. The research that we did showed that the letter was sent from the Parks and Rec Board to the council instructing, which I wasn't even aware that a Parks and Rec Board could instruct council on anything, but that instructing that, that the, the cabinet, the cabinet be sent back to the Parks and Rec Board. What, I, I spoke with the previous Economic Development Director who said that he had a conversation with you, saying that you needed to submit something to the Department of Economic Development. It's not that we never heard of it. It's that we did not receive anything from you. That is what happened.
I'd like to follow up with that. The time when the, somebody from the Department of Economic Development contacted me was at the close of that call for proposals for nonprofits. That had to do with the lease to own, not just a plain lease. And because of the neighborhood's objection to rezoning, I said that that was out, that the call for proposals was specific about lease to own, and that was incongruent with the neighborhood plan, the neighborhood wishes. And that was why a proposal wasn't submitted. But they were supposed to come to the table to discuss about, like, how we could work together without rezoning the property. So.
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to refer this to Mr. Cowell, the city manager, and he'll sort through that. But thank, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
If I may also clarify, and I don't want to get into a discussion on this because it's not the appropriate time, but as, as was mentioned, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board advises the council. They do not direct the council. And the council, twice was made, I think it actually twice, a letter was sent from Parks and Recreation Advisory Board requesting that the item be removed. Council discussed that in closed session both times and, and indicated their direction to, to the staff. So, what Economic Development doing, was doing is implementing the action coming from the, from the council. So, there was a conversation as a part of that, and it was a conversation with council as it should have been. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Madam, is it, we got another speaker?
No, we do not. That's the last speaker.
Okay. Well, that concludes the hearing of citizens upon public matters. Item four is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed, will be moved from the consent agenda and considered separately. I want to call the council's attention to, for closed meeting from my office, the mayor's office, requesting that we convene to discuss two upcoming vacancies on the Royal Oak City School Board, expiring June 30th, 2023, pursuant to Section 2.2, that's 30711, Code of Virginia as amended. Also, our city manager has called for a closed session to discuss the disposition of publicly-owned property located at 1015 Jamersum Avenue Southeast, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, pursuant to Section 2.2, that's 30711, Code of Virginia as amended. And from the city manager, closed session to discuss the disposition of publicly-owned property located at 339 Salem Avenue Southwest, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Code of Virginia as amended. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the board?
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Wallison?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the consent agenda is approved. Thank you all. All right, we're now down to item five of public hearings on the regular agenda. We have none. Item six is petitions and communications. We have none. And item number seven is reports of the city officers and comment of the city manager. Item number six one is the city manager briefing, and I'm pleased to recognize our city manager to introduce the briefings.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have two, two briefings today. One of those, in the first, will deal with the FY24 budget development, as has been our practice. We've been increasing the last couple of meetings, the, the briefings that relate to the capital improvements program. If you recall, in the past, we have done that over, I think, maybe just one, possibly two briefings. In this case, we've done three or four in order to give a little more time to focus on each component of this. The second briefing we will do will be your February monthly budget update for FY23. Kyle, set the stage and then turn it over to Paul to sort of walk through this for the CIP presentation. So, if you remember, of course, with the FY24 budget approval, the action that you'll be taking when you ultimately approve the budget really relates to that first year of the CIP, so that FY24 column. However, because these projects are both large in scale and lengthy in time duration, we actually prepare our CIP over a five-year period. So there is in effect a new fifth year, if you will, added each year as we go through. And while with the FY24 budget, that first line is fixed, or that first column is fixed with the approval, the remaining four years generally don't change much from year to year, but certainly do change based on circumstances. You'll see a couple of those as we, as we go through. Sometimes projects are added, sometimes projects drop off, sometimes projects are moved around with it as well. The longer-term planning also assists us in determining the best way in which to fund those, which is usually a combination of cash and debt issuances and grants, if we're able to secure those. So that longer-range planning allows us as well. All of the projects that end up in our CIP come from a general collection of, of resources. These are not projects that just sort of appear out of nowhere. Most of the projects come from adopted plans that you all have seen. So, think about things like the Parks and Recreation Plan. There are also a collection of master plans, library master plans, fire master plans, and, and so on. And that is where the majority of the projects come from. There are also assessments that are conducted by staff or consultants. So these could deal with the qual, the, sort of the characterization of the quality of our streets, or of our storm sewers, or what have you. Those would be another source of projects as they come in. Sometimes they're a result of regional coordination. So if the, the water authority, for example, intends on doing a project, we coordinate with them so that as they repair their water line, that becomes one of our paving, street projects as well, and vice versa. If we have a street project, often they will go in and do a water project. And then ultimately, kind of the, the fourth bucket, if you will, of those projects coming from are from you all. As, in particular, we discuss projects, or concerns, or ideas at the, the strategic plan, as we work our way through, through those, as you hear things in the community, or as other items come in as well. And then the last thing I'll say on this, before I turn it over to Paul, is of course, though, though significant in terms of what we're able to do each year, obviously, we're never able to meet all of the needs that, that we have across any of the categories. There, there simply is never enough money in order to actually address all of those in the timeframe that folks would prefer those be addressed. And you also have established policies in place that actually rightfully limit the amount of debt that we can actually issue against several standards. So there are some guardrails around what we can actually implement and what we can actually accomplish with the plan. So today's focus really is on what does the, the entirety of the CIP look like over the next five years, and a discussion about how ultimately we may be able to pay for that as we move forward. So with that, Paul, it's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you. And good afternoon, members of the city council, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb. So for the, the agenda today, we'd like to cover the fiscal year '24 through '28 CIP. As you recall, a month ago, we went into great detail into the fiscal year '24 projects. And of course, that is always the one that is the most dear to us, is it's the one that we're certainly going to implement. So we'll focus more on the '25 through '28 period. We also mentioned some of the cash-funded projects and grant-funded projects as well along the way. And then I'll turn it over to David Rose with our municipal advisors at Abenport, to give you a briefing on the, the Riverdale RFP bond issuance that's coming up, which you have action on later on this evening. So I will turn it over to him at some point. Just to sort of remind you of the, the process with the CIP and what this undergoes, we will receive the plans in November and December timeframe, and we will begin reviewing those and vetting them. And, and then those projects then get proposed and nominated. And so we will look at those recommendations. And, you know, ultimately, it comes to this point, we'll present to you those, those recommendations. So without further ado, I'll jump into this first slide, which I understand is a bit busy, but I'll remind anybody who might be watching from home that these presentations are all available on the Management Budgets website under the Budget Development section. This slide essentially shows all of the bond authorizations, if you will. So this does not show cash-funded or grant-funded projects. These are the bonds that are, that council is authorizing. So I'll bring to light the bridge renovation of 13.75 in fiscal year '23, which is authorized. But as you remember from a month ago, we likely will not be issuing those bonds. Then we'll issue them in fiscal year '25. But as this chart shows, this is the, the timeline for the authorization of those projects. And so part of our strategy is going to be to get these bonds authorized, and then we will look at the, the appropriate time of when it is to actually issue them, which will be another point. So, so with this schedule, I'll mention that all of the fiscal year '28 is new to this year, which adds an additional 32.15 million to the schedule. And then at the very bottom, what we've shown is last year's CIP planned bond totals, and compared that with this new plan. And as you'll see, we have increases in fiscal year '25 through '27 on top of the previously approved plan, which amounts to, between that, that four-year period of '24 through '27, adds an additional 34.48 million to the CIP. And of course, then we've got the additional coming on in fiscal year '28 of 32.15. So ultimately, at this point in time, the five-year CIP for the bond issuance, again, amounts to 168.84 million. On the next slide, essentially, we keep all the same categories, the same view, but what we've highlighted on this is ultimately the changes from one year to the next. So, and I'll just highlight a couple of these, but we do have slides that will go into each of these projects. Ultimately, some of the biggest changes, well, first of all, let me point out fiscal year '28 is all brand-new. So that is, fiscal year '28 is listed in its entirety. But as far as the increases go, we have bridge renovation, which is related to the Wassena Bridge, of 6.5 million. And that is partly related to inflation, as well as some funding that was pulled from that project earlier to add $2 million to the GRTC project, to the, to the station down there. And then for fiscal year '28, we essentially have the Melrose over Peters Creek Bridge, which is a $6 million project. For the library master plan, we have the Belmont Library, which is, is being pushed out from fiscal year '24, out to fiscal year '27. And as you can see from the figures, that there's expanded scope with that project. And so to, to be able to afford that additional build there, we've increased the amount of funding as well. So just some additional other general increases, the curb gutter sidewalk maintenance, we're growing the amount that we're putting into that to further along those efforts. We've added some additional bond funds for traffic signal maintenance in fiscal years '26 and '27. We are also growing those in '24 and '25, but we're going to cash fund for the signal modernization for those. The passenger rail is getting pushed out. And then we have some increases in our fleet capital, where we are growing that for pretty much all the, the years that are listed. And we still have a need that is beyond this, but this is what we've included in the plan ultimately. So what I'll do then is I'm going to jump into the individual slides. Actually, the next slide is the cash, the one-time funded items. And so for the Parks and Rec Master Plan, we've, we're going to provide an additional $475,000 out of our contingency account. And this will allow the Eureka Center to be funded at the $13 million that we have, that, that project will cost. For the stormwater management, that's $500,000 from the stormwater revenues. So pretty standard amount that can be cash-funded there. Now, for the curb gutter sidewalk maintenance, as well as the street paving, both, those are a $1 million increase. The hope with those is that we can fund those with year-end funds. And so that, of course, the year still has to end, and we'll see how that pans out. But the, the plan is to fund $2 million for those two projects. For traffic signal modernization, as I just mentioned, we will fund part of that with cash, and that is coming from one-time funds. We have fleet capital replacements of approximately $1 million, also coming from one-time funds. And then a downtown compactor, as well as the Hotel Ruina Colonia, of $450,000. And again, those would become, those would be funded from our, our one-time funds. On the next slide, on slide seven, we have the school facility capital improvements. They've requested, yes?
I'm sorry. Kit, probably why you're going wrong, would you mind taking questions, if you get on something in there?
Sure. Yeah. And we have some of the project managers here in the council And we have some of the project managers here in the council chambers. So if we need to have them come up to answer questions, we can do that as well.
I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question before we move on, Paul. And I will say I commend Ms. Merchant and her team for always putting together a balanced budget and working as hard as they do. I just have a quick question about the the street pavement and the ADA improvements. And I know you just said you were going to look at year-end funds. But in the event that that does not happen or, you know, that does not occur, I just I just feel like sometimes we need to be a little bit more aggressive with the street paving and the ADA, because we're just not really making a whole lot of progress. And it seems like it's always a million dollars. But and I know it's got to come from somewhere. I'm just putting it out there. But I think we do need to be a little bit more aggressive on that because the the streets are just, I mean, we've got to take care of our infrastructure. So maybe that's something you all can take a look at perhaps moving forward.
And this $1 million essentially will fund, fully fund their request. And and so the we had increased the funding for street paving by a million dollars of additional bonds a while ago. So that is built into the current plan. I think if you look back on.
Yeah, I saw that on the other page. But then there was like five years, there was nothing.
Right.
So I'm just, I just want to put that out there because we really do have to to make sure we just put a little bit more focus on our streets and our paving and the ADA.
Yeah, the ADA, the street, the sidewalk ramps is something that was new a couple of years ago, that that alone was about a million dollars as they went through and paved streets. They needed to also upgrade.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to put it in the atmosphere. It's out there now.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on what Trish was saying. Could you tell us how much is now in the budget for paving? I know you got the money from last year from the personal property tax rebate that was added in, which was additional funds for the paving.
We didn't get it, remember, we gave it.
Right, but there was still some that was still.
No, no, that was my recommendation that we do that. But then we wound up doing rebates.
Right, but we only gave them to those who had applied. So there was still money. Ms. Bob corrects me on that piece.
There was no additional funding out of out of that source that went into into paving.
Okay. So how much is actually available for paving now?
Yeah, the operating budget includes 4,289,000.
That's what, okay.
And that will that will fund 50 lane miles. And then for each $1 million that you add, adds 15 miles.
15, so which 65?
65, that is correct.
So you're only giving about 65.
And then with the additional one-time that was just mentioned, that would presumably do another 15 miles.
But you've already started doing the paving around certain streets out of this money now?
Not for the timeline.
The paving that, so any paving we're doing right now is actually paving that was already budgeted for in this year. So the FY '24 will pick it up.
The 420,000 is this year or is it coming up, 2024? But 2024.
That will be that will be for next year's paving program. So the paving that's going on right now is what's in this year's approved budget.
And you didn't get anything from the state for paving for 2023?
We.
We get that 5%, right?
Yeah, we do get some.
I thought it was 400 some. I have to go back and look at my notes on that.
Yeah.
But is the list for these streets that you're doing, the 65, is that list available? I think I asked that last time.
Yeah, the so when the paving program, when the paving program begins for this spring, then we will provide the the full list of what's being paved. Once with the budget, what we submit to you for approval with the budget this year will include what's anticipated for the FY '24 paving. So yes, that paving list will be a part of it.
So is the list available for last year, I mean, for this this year we end? Is there a list of streets that are being paved?
Yes, yes.
And where is that list that the public can see it?
We can make it available. We've we've provided it back when the last, when the paving, you know, the paving gets divided into two seasons. So we did it last season. It was a carryover. Remember, it has that whole list, and we just keep paving down till.
Right, right. I understand.
It's the same list, I think.
It's that same list.
I just keep hearing that they are interested in knowing where if their street is on the list. So I'm just trying to find the list.
Sure. Yeah, I don't think the list, y'all can correct and wrong, I don't think the list is actually on.
Yeah.
I'm looking at Ian so he can.
Yeah, they gave it to us before. Yeah.
So if a citizen is interested, if you go to the City Engineers webpage, there is a GIS map there that does show the approximate areas we'll be paving. So there is an interactive map that that can be looked at. And then if there is a desire for a specific list of streets, we can certainly get that for you.
And for those who can't, does not like to access websites, will you give them a number they can call the Engineering Department?
Sure. Yeah, 853-2731.
Repeat.
Excuse me?
Repeat. You said it so fast, repeat one more time.
It's 853-2731.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I need.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. I appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have one question and one comment. The question on Slide 6, when you refer to the downtown compactor, is that, I think you spoke about, is that the one that's in the West Station area or is it actually the one that's downtown?
The West End. West End Downtown is what we've called it.
West End Downtown area. Because there have been some businesses too have been making comments about hoping that there be accessibility at some point in the future to access recycling because they use so many materials, and it's all just going into the dumpsters right now in that area, unless they pay for something privately otherwise. But my, the, just want to make a brief comment on the passenger rail station because I see it's being delayed again to 2026. And I know at the state level, passenger rail extending to the New River Valley is even seeing delays. But I, my hope is that we will have our station up and running before we extend passenger rail down to the New River Valley. And we don't continue pushing that down the line.
Yeah, and and just for a little bit of clarification, the delay is actually, in this case, associated with Amtrak still trying to settle out what their business model is going to be. So you may recall, some of you that were here, it was before I was even here, so I don't know how many people were here. But the time when the train, when the idea of the train station came up, Amtrak provided us with kind of their typical model, which would take up the entire first floor of the building that we we own, which is fine. That's what this budget number is actually built off of. And and it would be staffed by Amtrak. Since that, since COVID, they have actually started looking at other models, which arguably would be smaller, probably like a waiting area. And it's not clear that it will be staffed. So we also have to figure out that piece of it. So but they've not settled on that. So that's actually kind of what's moved. That's the reason it's moved is we're still waiting for them because it's, even though it's in our building, it is technically an Amtrak station. And so we need from them what it is that they want with that piece. But that's what's moved at this time.
Mr. Cal, I have one question. Don't some of the compactors already have recycle next to them?
I don't think that the, I don't think that any of ours do because they're picked up privately, whereas we recycle, we provide the public recycling, but there may be.
Maybe some private ones that have, yeah, there's some private ones that have recycling. So they may be private, yes.
When I went on my my ride along with public or solid waste, the compactors in downtown, they do have recycling bins next to them.
And there are, they are bins in that?
Yes, they are, yeah.
Do we have something to hold up?
All right, well, we're going, we, I know, I want Paul to get through this. Y'all can jot down the questions and hold them until we get to the end. Yes, Ryan?
I just want to say hi.
Okay, thank you.
We will proceed, okay. And I'll move fairly quickly through these and then have an opportunity for questions at the end, of course. So the school facility capital improvement, as we mentioned before, for the fiscal year 24 is 12.855. And I won't go through all of the projects that are listed here. But here we're showing for fiscal year 25 through 28, $5 million for each year. A lot of this, of course, is Preston Park Elementary for several years, with completion of that in fiscal year 27, before they begin picking up some of the other projects. On Slide 8, we talk about our various building projects. And you'll see the the picture there is of Fire Station Number 2. But first, let me talk about the libraries. And so library master plan, this includes the Melvont Belmont Library of 6.7 million dollars in fiscal year 27. And then it includes 1.2 million for the main library Phase 2 in fiscal year 28. Fire Station Number 2 includes 1.85 million between fiscal year 24 and 25. And then with construction beginning in fiscal year 26 of 9.65 million dollars in bonds issued. For the Public Works Service Center, we have a replacement of the Wash House and the Refueling Center, which would take place over 20 fiscal year 24 and 25, of approximately $5 million. We have the new parking lot and resurfacing out there as well at a cost of 1.5 million. For capital building maintenance, this is a whole host of multiple projects, but typically it deals with HVAC, electrical and lighting needs, among others, projects. And that is at $1 million per year. We've included $170,000 per year for underground storage tank replacements. For office renovations, we have the magistrate's office renovation in fiscal year 24 and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office renovation, which will have construction in fiscal year 25. For city building roof replacements, we have a whole host of different buildings that will receive new roofs pretty much once, one a year. On Slide 9, we have fleet capital replacements. And the the first chart there gets to the various vehicle replacements. So there's a whole host of different items that are included in that. But the base operating budget is somewhere between 1.9 and 1.2 million dollars between fiscal year 24 and 28. The bond funded portions of that starts out at 600,000. It will grow to 1 million in fiscal year 25 through 27, and then increase in fiscal year 28. And the reason that it is scaled like that is essentially to, fiscal year 25 is going to be a tight year for us for debt service. And so we've pushed out some of these projects, and that's the reason for the the increase. For other projects, we have the Hazmat Truck and Trailer, which you'll see an image of that right in the the center right of the of the slide. So that would be replaced at a cost of 1.4 million dollars. We have 12 police units at $80,000 each and a police K-9 unit. For fiscal year 26, we have solid waste, two side loaders at 1.6 million dollars, and then a fire ladder truck in fiscal year 27 at 2.125 million.
If I, if I can, as Paul's switching to the next slide, because this is an area that we want to kind of highlight because this is, as Paul had mentioned earlier and as I mentioned as well, that, you know, that the needs in some of these areas are beginning to outpace what we can actually afford. Fleet is one of those areas. If you were to look at this slide last year, you would see significant increases in costs. And what's not seen is it now is taking between nearly three years, actually, to get a fire truck. So we're actually having to plan much earlier with this. But just using the police units as an example, fully outfitted, they're beginning to approach $100,000 just for a single unit and are also delayed as well. So this is an area that I think, to say that our concern is growing about our ability to meet the need is kind of an understatement. And so we'll probably be talking post-budget further with you all about some ideas that may need to take place here with with fleet.
On Slide 10, we have the Parks and Rec Master Plan projects. And so just to quickly go through the 24 projects with the Washington Park Pool, Richardson, Wayland Building Renovation, and the Skate Park. And then beyond that, we have the Eureka Park Side Amenities, Washington Park Side Anemis Amenities, excuse me. The park maintenance, which is various playgrounds, courts, parking, fencing, and other improvements. We have Northwest Greenway ADA Compliance, Morningside Park in fiscal year 28. And that is a, there's a master plan for the Morningside Park. And then we have to be identified various park facilities. And some of the options with that would be potentially the the pool, Fishburne Mansion, or some other projects. But at this time, we have 1.5 million built into fiscal year 28. One thing, a couple of things that I'll mention that are not on this slide would be the grant funded projects that I'm sure we've all heard about before, which one of them is the Wassena In River Kayak Park, which is ARPA funded at $2 million between fiscal year 23 and 25. The other one is Tinker Creek Greenway, which will receive federal funding. And that's going to, that will be from Mason Mill to 13th Street in fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24. And then from 13th Street to Wise in fiscal year 25. On Slide 11, we address the streets, sidewalks, bridges, and other infrastructure. For the bridge renovations, we have the 13th Street Southwest over Norfolk Southern Railway, which is fully grant funded. So that is, has a zero dollar associated with it as far as the city funding goes. For Wiley Drive Low Rudder Bridge, we'll have funds of 1.5 million in fiscal year 24. The Wassena Replacement in fiscal year 25, additional 6.5 million, as was mentioned before. And then we'll also issue along with that in fiscal year 25 is the 13.75 that you've already authorized for issuance in '23. We have the Melrose over Peters Creek Bridge in fiscal year 27 and 28. For curb gutters and sidewalks, we are contributing $2 million towards installing installing new sidewalks, curbs and gutter. And then we have half a million dollars for repairing the existing. And then, as mentioned before, also, we'll have $1 million potentially that will come from year-end funds towards that project. For streetscape project improvements, we typically provide half a million dollars towards this effort every year. And that would potentially be the Shenandoah Avenue over Peters Creek to Salem area, as well as Peters Creek and Cove Road. Street paving, I know we've already had discussions about that. So I'll move on to traffic signal modernization, which we will cash fund 300,000 fiscal year 24, 750,000 in '25. And then beyond that, $750,000 of bond funds beyond there. And then passenger rail station, which we've already mentioned. For technology improvements, we have the implementation of an ERP financial system upgrade, which is undergoing. And we've planned for 1.9 in fiscal year 24 and half a million in fiscal year 25. We have global HR migration, global payroll, talent management, internet ring expansion, regional radio antennas in cooperation with the county, and virtualized prime site, which is related to radio, also with the county. And then public safety, mobile radio replacements. Under the stormwater improvements, we have a whole host of various locations identified. I won't bother to read through those, but our folks at home can certainly read through these and look for for their streets if they're curious. But typically, we are providing about $3 million per year for each for each stormwater improvement year, and that's in in bonds.
And and I do want, and Paul had mentioned this earlier as well, for stormwater itself, of course, this is coming, this is operated as enterprise. So these funds are the funds that are collected through the stormwater charged to the fee. So that's what's paying for these these projects.
Good point.
Or paying for the debt that actually we're borrowing to do these projects.
Right, it is self-supporting. Next on Slide 14, we have the Burgland Center. We are going to continue to provide 1.5 million dollars for each fiscal year. And so in fiscal year 24, we have various projects we've already mentioned. In fiscal year 25 through 28, that would include the BPAT stage lift, pump replacement in a boiler room, air handling units, and parking lot resurfacing, and then many other projects as well throughout that time period. So that brings us to Slide 15, which is to talk about the debt service. And as Bob had mentioned, the Stormwater Fund pays for its own debt. So these numbers are actually just the general fund debt service amount, as well as the Burgland Center, because the general fund does subsidize the Burgland Center. And so we've included them in these figures as well. But the, and just to, just to explain how we budget for debt service, we will budget at a certain level, but we know that the debt service is actually going to be something less than that. And really, what we're doing is we're building in capacity for future growth in our debt service into the budget now. And so that difference, which under this plan brings us to about 2.8 million dollars of difference, those are the funds that we get to use towards our one-time projects that we've been mentioning. So anytime we mention cash funding of one time, this is essentially the source that those funds will come from. So the anticipated debt that's required under this would be 16.5 million. So the anticipated debt that's required under this would be 16.5 million approximately. So the next slide essentially has that same listing, but it gives you the full span of fiscal year '25. In this case, we go out to fiscal year '29, because anything that we issue in '28 kicks in in fiscal year '29 as far as the debt service goes. So the road to pay attention to on this one would be that second line. So for fiscal year '24, at this point, we don't anticipate growing our debt service budget. We just have a, we would anticipate level funding that. We may decide to provide some additional funds as we go through the budget balancing process. But for now, we think that providing an additional 1 million between fiscal year '25 through '29 would be sufficient to cover all of our debt service under this plan. Now, I will mention that David Rose with Davenport will likely come back in a couple of weeks, that he will lay out a plan and validate these numbers, and I know he's got some, some other approaches that he wants to present as well that may help us improve the situation even more. So with that, I'll open the floor for any questions before I turn it over to David.
I'm going to go to the question, ma'am.
Thank you, Paul. Just a couple of questions. If I'll, on the Belmont Library, the $6 million, is that an additional project on the library? Because I know there's, there's something currently underway, or is that all one and the same?
It's the, so there, it's the total. So if you remember, in the approved budget, there was shy of, right around $2 million, I think, for both engineering and for the improvement. As, as that project, and this is, again, one of these, one of the examples of how much construction costs have changed, as that project was designed and was getting priced out, it was clearly well above what that budget enabled. We, we asked the architect involved if there was a way to phase it, in effect, do a, do kind of the refresh piece, because remember, it had two pieces, a refresh and an addition? Could we do the refresh piece and defer the addition piece? And, and it was his conclusion that that would not be feasible. And so what that did is that required us, in order to get the budget for the whole project, we've had to push it out further into, into the CIP, as has been shown there. So the amount that's shown on there now would accomplish everything, it would accomplish the refresh as well as the, the addition, and the addition is essentially a room addition on it as well. Of course, that is obviously based on costs currently. It, it may escalate as we move forward, but we'll, we'll have to deal with that as we, as we go, go forward. Hopefully, supply chain issues will resolve themselves, so at least it'll balance out at that point. But, but no, that's, for that same project, it just is no longer affordable what we currently had budgets. That's why you're seeing the CIP sort of zeroing out the amount that we already had planned for it, those dollars reallocated elsewhere in the CIP, and then, then take the total match at the, or the total amount at the end.
Okay. Do you have a question about the library?
No.
Okay. I've got a couple more, then. I noticed on the city on-the-roof repairs that are replacements, that the jail is one of those. Have we received any additional CIP requests from the jail? I know there are a number of issues, capital issues internally, and I just wondered if we had received additional.
We have, we have an upcoming meeting with the sheriff to talk about the, the jail requests that will be going forward. It's another area that will potentially result in significant change in the CIP and the out years. We can't simply absorb the cost into the CIP that has been shown. And depending on the amount of capital, we've, we've always done kind of routine maintenance things, these are items that exceed kind of routine maintenance. And depending on that amount, we may, again, similar to fleet, we may have to have a separate conversation with council about different alternatives or options, but yeah, we have a meeting coming up on that.
Okay. On the technology improvements, I just love for technology to work, I don't know how it works. Could somebody kind of give me a layperson's view of all of these things that are listed here under technology improvements?
I could try.
Just to have a better understanding of what, what these all involve.
Yeah. So the ERP financial system, that is our accounting system, as well as our procurement system, budget system, accounts payable, accounts receivable, well, no, not accounts receivable, but it is a very comprehensive system that will accomplish a lot of the work that we do here in finance. It will replace some, some of our existing processes. For global HR migration, global payroll, talent management, these are all programs that will be implemented by our HR department, and those, that implementation is underway now. For the internet ringing, it's ringing expansion, that is to extend our internet ring to our recreation centers, as well as to our fire departments. It allows us to have some backup as far as the, the internet ring, and ultimately, the fire department relies on the internet for their, for dispatching calls, and currently they rely on a private internet provider. So this would essentially take that out of the loop, so that we would be then in control on, on the internet that's provided through our dispatch. For the regional radio antennas, as well as the virtual prime site, those are both in conjunction with Roanoke County in upgrading the, the communications systems that will be going unsupported at some time in the next couple of years. And then public safety, mobile radios, those are just traditional, typical replacement of aging radios.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Last question is, on the Burgland roof replacement, on the Arts Theater, I know there's been conversation through the years about adding solar to Burgland, to the roof. I don't know if that's part of this conversation, I don't know what the cost is, just in terms of our progressing toward more solar-based energy, is, has that been a part of the conversation?
This is strictly repair.
Just repairing the roof.
Yes, yes, there, probably a piece of the Climate Action Plan discussion that we'll be having with you all here over the next few months, will introduce more discussion about not only solar, but other, both energy-conscious, as well as environmentally-friendly building practices. As with everything else, of course, we'll then have to figure out, you know, all these buildings we're showing you right now meet certain standards, but not necessarily include those, so that will obviously increase costs, and we'll, we'll work our way through, through those as we, as we proceed.
Thanks, thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Counselor Prudential.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. First, a comment on the solar. I do think that the hope is that the projects will be able to partially fund themselves based on the energy that they produce, but that requires some working with the state and an approval from APCO. But thank you for the presentation. I do have a question about the skate park. As mentioned here, with the delay of the Main Street Bridge in Wasina being pushed to '25, the skate park is still slated to receive funding for fiscal year '24. My understanding that they're supposed to be constructed at the same time, because the skate park really won't be accessible until the bridge is complete. So is fiscal year '24 still appropriate for the skate park, or is that just planning money?
Yeah, we've decided, based on where, where it can be located and how construction will be phased, that the park can be constructed and then ultimately used, even while the bridge is under construction. So we've been able to keep it in its, in its timeframe.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Red Bull.
Yeah, I'll be brief, mayor, I kind of ask my questions along the way. I just wondered, the briefing is very helpful, but I noticed that you said that citizens would have to go to economic development under this for that, and is, is there a place where they can just have a briefing like this, it's not on the agenda, but it would be really nice?
This briefing is actually online.
Online? Where is it online?
It's on, it's in the Management and Budget webpage, so it's on, on the sub-page that is Management and Budget. There's a whole, actually, every briefing we've done on the budget is there. So everything we've shared with you all at each of these briefings is, is all in that location. Obviously, once the budget is complete and we're presenting it to you all, copies of those will be made avail, hard copies will be made available in other locations like libraries and so on with it. These briefings are all available on, online.
Yeah, and that, and you made my point, how many residents would know to go to Management and Budget to get a copy of it? I just, we'll talk later, I just think there should be an easier way for them to access this information. It, it's really helpful for me, and I'm sure it would be helpful for our residents to understand where we are, you know, fiscally.
Yeah, and transparency is very important to us on this. There, the, I will say, the engineering department does keep a page that lists out all of their projects as well. So there is that opportunity. Parks and Rec has a component of their site that also addresses future projects, as well as fire and other departments. So currently, it's kind of in different places. We do have one consolidated capital improvement program site that may need to be updated, but will, that's something that we are definitely working towards.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, because it, it was something that came up continuously in our Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board meetings, under service delivery. And so we did make some progress, but I think this is what the citizens are referring to when they're saying that, you know, it's just really, there's not very much communication. It's there, you, it's obviously there, it's just, we need to make it a little bit easier for, for our residents to access this kind of information. And thank you, Mr. Workman, I appreciate it.
All right, you have your name as well? Okay.
Mr. Workman, I know we're, we're in a very interesting time with inflation, so these numbers are, are, you know, what we're guessing, but we expect them to go up. Is there any general sense of how much inflation is on things like construction as opposed to groceries?
From what I understand, construction is outpacing groceries, and I'm not sure about eggs, but certainly groceries. The, the planning figures that we used included a 30% increase due to inflation on all of these, based on the local construction news publication that's put out. They, they do include, hopefully they are, they are correct, given that, but yeah, it is scary to see some of these numbers go up, honestly.
Yeah, I think, just as an example, a couple of years ago, we had a project bid that was bid at 250 a square foot, $250 a square foot, which at that time, we thought was nearly ludicrous. And we're now seeing projects, and we're pricing projects at 400 and $500 a square foot, so it is substantially more than what it was previously. Some of that's unique to public facilities, you know, there aren't very many fire stations, obviously, built, but some of it's just across the entire spectrum of construction.
That's all my question was, just about inflation and the problems it causes.
All right, Ms. Moore.
Speaking of inflation, I'm on the CIP on page seven. My questions actually surround, on Preston Park Elementary, is that, is that to build a new school, or is that just improvements to the school? I see from '24 to '27. I don't, I can't recall the conversations that have been had with regards to what is being done with Preston Park.
Yeah, my recollection is it's improvements, but they're substantive improvements, but I don't know the exact scope of what the school has proposed. I know it's in the information that they have provided with us, so we can certainly secure that for you. But I think it's, I say improvements, but it's, it's more than just fit and finish. I mean, it's actually pretty substantial.
Right, because I'm looking at '25, '26, '27, and you see a total of 15 million. That's why I was asking, and we talk about inflation, so I'm thinking by '27, it will not be about 5 million, it would be by the time they're ready to complete it. Well, they're five, I'm sorry, that 5 million in '27 covers other things. Speaking of what Vice Mayor had said, with regards to roof replacements, will there be solar panels for those roofs that's listed here for the elementary schools? With North Sea Taylor Academy in '28, '27 has roof replacement for Ram, and a roof replacement next year for Fishwick Middle School.
Yeah, the, the school manages and designs all of their projects on their own.
Okay, you just give them money.
I'm not aware of any solar incorporated. Again, the roof projects, I believe, are just like ours, they're, they're actually repairs of roof.
Okay, is that, I see replacement, that's why I was asking, instead of repairs.
Yeah, yeah, you know, but I don't know any current plans that they have beyond some of the energy savings activities that all of us have been doing over the last several years, but certainly can find out more if there's more to that.
Please, I think that's worth knowing. And also, on, on number eight, just, just asking, because I don't know, and that's why I ask questions. With regards to the main library Phase Two, I see it's 1.2, what improvements will be done at the main library?
Well, I, I think there is some renovations that will be taking place in the sections that have not yet been updated.
Such as?
Yeah, so the, the entire administrative wing that's over, kind of from the Virginia Room over, as Sheila, if Sheila was here, she would say, Sheila would say that the windows in there were placed in 1957, and so that's, a lot of it is that, it's really HVAC, it's about all of the, the finishes, all of that work in there. There are no expansions of the facility, it is all reworking that.
Maybe when she gets back, perhaps, she could come and give a, I'm just curious of that. And also, on your office renovations, where you're doing the, you may not be able to answer this one either, on the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the 1.8 million, is that just regutting the office and just redoing the whole suite?
Yeah, that's the, so if you remember where the Law Library was?
Right.
So we moved the Law Library out so that the Commonwealth Attorney's Office could relocate from an off-site location into that area.
So he's going downstairs?
Yes, and they, and they have only been operating kind of as a, a bunch of cubicles that have been popped in there temporarily.
I recall the conversation, okay.
So it will actually be to completely outfit that as an office space.
And what will you be doing with his office space, or is he taking both?
It will be both, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they used to have a space off-site that has now come on-site.
Okay. And let me see here, that might be all right. On your, on page 11, I have questions, with regards to what is being done at Grayson and 10th Street? Grayson and 10th is part of the 10th Street project, and I'm just trying to get around what is being done right there in 20, in fiscal year '27.
We'll bring up Luke Pugh, our city engineer.
They're here. Hi, Luke, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Grayson and 10th Street will be actually a connection from 10th Street over to Lucy Addison. So while we did a lot of improvements on 10th Street, we didn't connect those side streets. So it's almost like a safe routes to school project, so it's going.
So you're looking, oh, well, okay, going from 10th back down to 8th Street?
Right, so you'll, you'll go from 10th Street down Grayson to 8th Street, and then go up the hill to Lucy Addison, yes.
Okay.
So it's a curb gutter.
Okay, okay, that answers that one.
Okay.
And is that, you're doing some streetscape project improvements to Shenandoah and Peters Creek, going towards Salem? What type of improvements on the streetscapes are you doing?
Those, those are curb gutter sidewalk programs, so we're looking at, right now, there's a area right at Salem Turnpike, near Peters Creek, it's kind of a no man's land, so to speak.
Right, yes.
So we're going to connect that to the apartment complex. We see a lot of foot traffic through there, that folks are coming down to Peters Creek to go to various grocery stores, or various convenience markets. There's not actually a curb gutter and sidewalk system there, so that's going to be one project. The second project is we're looking at a part of Cove and Peters Creek, where the Good Samaritan Hospice is actually building a site right now, which is really close to that intersection. And so we want to make sure, as part of their development requirements, they have curb gutter and sidewalk requirements that connect back to the sidewalk that takes you back to Portland. So we want to connect that on down to the Sheetz area, that way people will have full access to that corridor right there.
Right, so they're not walking along the shoulder.
Right.
And you said, is that, that's the same thing for Shenandoah and Peters Creek, where they walk along the shoulder?
Yeah, after you cross the bridge, you're walking in, in the shoulder area.
Right.
So we're going to put a sidewalk through there.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right. Who got a little?
That's a leak.
I'm going to send Chase Jones this question.
Hi, I have a question about the Westwood and Red Fox.
Yes.
Is that, is Red Fox right by the elementary school, is that the entrance?
Uh, Westwood is right next to the Fairview Elementary.
Right.
So Red Fox is one block toward Peters Creek.
Okay.
So we're going to make that connection, it's almost like another safe routes to school project, so we're going to make the curb gutter and sidewalk connection down to that neighborhood, and improve the intersection right there at, at the Turnpike and Westwood.
Because my concern has been that intersection right there, right outside the apartments.
Yeah, that's part of the improvements, upgrading that intersection, providing a little bit more visibility, designating the crosswalks a little better, and providing those amenities down to Red Fox.
Or a traffic light something, because it's crazy. Or a traffic light something because it's crazy.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a heavily used intersection with a lot of pedestrians.
And a lot of people just fly down that road, Speedway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanna add to that, because right there where she's referring to where the Westwood apartments are, there's really not a turn coming, I wanna say coming west at Shannon, I mean at Salem Turnpike in West Side, I think it's West Side, Westwood where Fairview School is at. Is there any way of putting something there to slow traffic down, because it's a blind spot? And with, as, as Ms. Sanchez is saying, when people are trying to cross right there, it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah, it is.
It's a dangerous little intersection right there.
We're looking at that, we're also looking at bumping the curbs out, so the pedestrian doesn't have as far to walk across the street. Right now, the curb over Fair Lawn set back, where you really can't see the children as you're coming up the road.
That's right.
So we're pushing that out, so the, the children have more visible space, and then we're reducing the length of the crosswalk. As far as putting the left, a left turn, I'd have to check on that.
Yeah, it's something I think needs to be there, because I notice when I've traveled there, cars tend to go.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of one of our older intersections that was really designed more for vehicles than pedestrian accommodations. So as we go back and look at those intersections, one of our key goals is try to reduce the travel distance for the pedestrian as they're crossing the road.
Yeah, especially children.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, two more questions, and then we'll go to our council. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I'll turn it over to David Rose, our municipal advisor with Davenport.
Again, David Rose, appreciate the opportunity to see some very familiar faces and some new faces, so welcome. Let me start by echoing some of the comments that Mr. Robertson said a few moments ago. As your financial advisor, we wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for the fact that the city's been receiving those awards, and many of those for many years in a row. That really is the gold standard of local government finance, and if we don't have that, I can't give my presentation today because investors have no confidence if they don't see the city looking as it does. Today is not necessarily the time, but I will say that when I'm back, we'll talk a little bit about your credit ratings. Suffice to say, your credit ratings are excellent, they're considered very strong, that's not even my terminology, that's the, the rating agencies that are independent bodies, and again, they have been reaffirmed and they continue to be, so again, you're in good stead, particularly for the citizens. The next thing I'd like to do today, though, is give you a briefing, I will not be too long, I promise, please feel free to stop me, but we're gonna talk a little bit today about the Economic Development Project, Riverdale, and just make a couple of commentary as it relates to next steps with regard to what you just saw, the multi-year CIP, and particularly the '24 fiscal year coming up. So to begin with, as you can see here in the background, we have had the good fortune of working with the staff to talk about some funding strategies for what I think is going to be a game changer for you over time, and that is the Riverdale Economic Development Project. We recommended, working with the staff again, that the city go through the Economic Development Authority and issue general obligation bonds, but to move them, if you would, into a segregated category through the EDA. We decided that and basically did that so that it would be transparent to the rating agencies, transparent to citizens, as well as investors, so that we could better monitor and follow what's happening. As you saw, there's literally 100 different projects over the course of the next five years. The goal is to put this in effect in its own separate box, if you would, and that way it's easier to track and again, take care of. What we're recommending was that we issue what we call bond anticipation notes, bands, if you would, they're interest only for five years, but we have the ability to prepay that earlier if we choose. I say we, I'm talking about the city, of course. The EDA would be basically a conduit, and the deep pocket would be the city. So ultimately, this is really your project, of course. What we wanted to do then, if you would, let me just go down, is also set up a means so that as these bands are issued, the interest for them that would be due every year would be payable through a, another source of money put aside, and that is a $2 million escrow. The city already has that $2 million, that's not borrowed money, that's money that you've had over time, and the city manager and others can, can speak to that. But our hope was to take care of and put a pot of money together that could pay for, if you would, the next four-plus years of interest if need be. And the good news here is by doing that, all of the various financial policies that you have would continue to be met, if not exceeded, in a good way. And again, that's one of those ways that you end up continuing to have very strong credit ratings, is these financial policies we're alluding to are self-imposed, and I've been in front of you on several of those. We're actually gonna make some recommendations in the next meeting that I have about even further adding to some of those policies. So in addition to that, the last bullet point here, let's make sure you get that, is to continue to work with your staff to talk about some of those strategies to borrow the right amount of money, if you would, in fiscal year '24, so that, as Mr. Workman alluded to, we continue to maintain all the policies. The most difficult one at the moment, if you would, is what I'll call the debt service to your expenditures, your revenues. It really is the credit card, it's saying that we don't want to go past 10 cents on every dollar in the future for your, in effect, for your debt service. And again, we're able to meet that, we want to make sure we continue to meet that in spite of the fact that the capital requirements keep going up, in part because, again, that inflation and that additional costs that everything is out there, whether we like it So in order to effect the strategy that we talked about issuing this bond anticipation note, back in February 15th, to be exact, working with staff, working with legal counsel, we put together a formal request for proposal. Again, for some of you that are new, I am your financial advisor on behalf of our firm, Davenport, so we are your fiduciaries. We do not provide you the actual funds, we just simply try to make sure whatever funds you borrow are the most cost-effective. It's from the lender or lenders that are meeting all the terms and conditions that you have identified with us. So in order to do that, we thought the most appropriate way, which we have done in the past with you, is to go out and do a national review, both local, regional, statewide, and national banking firms, and to ask them if they would to look at the city's finances, look at our proposed structure, look at the approach that we have, and to see what indeed they think. So the good news here is we received 11 bona fide responses. Now, that may not sound like a lot when you send it out to dozens of banks, but that's actually an extraordinarily good result. That's as good a result as we've seen for the city in the five-plus years I've had the opportunity of working with you. When we looked at those results, though, there was even some better information, and that was both the interest rate and the flexibility, and we'll get into that in a moment. The firm that we are recommending is First Citizens Bank, they are technically out of Columbia, South Carolina, but they have offices throughout our region. So I indicated a moment ago that we received some very good responses, frankly, better than we had even done the planning for. The bank has offered to provide a fixed rate for five years, if the debt is out that long, at a 4.93% rate. In spite of what's happened in terms of these very, how do I say, unsettled markets the last two weeks, that rate that they provide us, the terms and conditions, were all fixed through the first week of April when we formally closed on these bonds, on these bands, I should say, they're really technically notes. Under five years is considered a note, over five years is considered a bond. But they have said they would lock it in, they have affirmed that commitment, and again, this is fixed through the entire five-year period. What's also particularly important to us is we wanted the ability to prepay this early if the project, for any number of reasons, takes off in a way that's even faster than expected, or for whatever reason, interest rates come down, we want to do some refinancing, we're able to do that in year three without penalty. So that's a very big, if you want to call it flexible, term that we care a lot about. And then finally, as I mentioned, that $2 million that's available, that's going to make it so that Mr. Workman and his merchant and Mr. Robertson, as they talk about the budgets that were up on the screen a few minutes ago for debt service, they will not have to take any of those critical dollars and use them towards this $10 million borrowing. Rather, that $2 million, that's separate apart from anything we've talked about, will take care of this interest for at least the next four and a half years, which really means that in that roughly four and a half year timeframe, if we don't pay this off early, we're then going to do something in terms of some more permanent financing. But again, that's going to depend upon how the project moves forward, what happens at that period of time, or even earlier. So again, it's accounted for both financially and structurally. So that begs the question, what are the next steps, if you would? It is now March 20th, this evening, I believe at 7:00, you will ask, be asked to do a number of things, and grant what we call a preliminary authorization to contract, as we say here, a general obligation in deadness tied to an agreement between the city and the EDA. That's what has been put together, and that allows, if you would, for the EDA to have the mechanism to make the payments as a pass-through. So ultimately, that begs the question, when the EDA makes its, its approvals on this 22nd in just two days, what happens? They are going to depend on you, the city, to meet your agreement, to take care of all of this, as again, they are not liable, they are a pass-through. In addition, there is a performance agreement that is tied in with the developer to make sure that they do the things that they are promising to do, otherwise there's recourse by you to, to this whole financing program. The goal here, then, is to make sure that before the 31st of this month, the developer is going to be closing on this, and so the city's going to, in effect, advance dollars, and then in early April, when the formal closing occurs, after a public hearing, which will be held on April 3rd, what will then happen is the monies will then come back. And so again, this will work as we had hoped, close of all of this, basically, in the very first few days of, of April. So if there's no questions, or if there's some questions, I should say, Mr. Mayor, on the EDA project, Riverdale, let me, if I can, I'm happy to answer that now before moving to a separate topic, which is a recommendation that we have as it relates to your financial policies. So a couple of different concepts today that I'm trying to, to address.
Any questions from the members of council?
And certainly if you have questions after the others, by all means, but I just want to make sure while we're on the topic. Okay. So as I indicated, there was another couple of things I wanted to discuss briefly today, and that is, as I said a moment ago, the city has self-imposed financial policy guidelines. Five years ago, you had several of those guidelines, you were not in compliance with all those guidelines. At that time, we took a comprehensive review of your finances, made a number of recommendations, and you are now and have been in compliance with all of your policies for the last five years. It's also why your credit ratings have been given very good positive feedback, and those, by the way, those ratings are publicly available reports, and they are done, again, not by us, but by independent rating agencies, they're known as Moody's Investor Service, Standard and Poor's Corporation, and then finally Fitch Investor Service, all of which are independent, all of which basically put no holds bar, if they don't like what you're doing, if they don't like a trend, they're gonna tell you that, and that's their purview. Having said all that, though, they have been very positive about what you've done, you've increased and improved many of your policies. And then lastly, because they continue to change the way they look at things, particularly Moody's Investor Service, which did this this past year, we are going to recommend, at that very bottom there, let me make sure I've got it for the citizens and everyone, we're gonna recommend that simultaneous with any financing we do and/or ultimately the budget, finally, that we add what we call a fixed cost policy. That's a fancy way of saying that the rating agencies call fixed costs not only debt service, but they also include pension contributions and OPEB contributions. So they want to see, in effect, all of, is what they call it, all of your longer-term liabilities bundled together, and they want to make sure that that bundling, if you would, is more extensive than the debt service to expenditures, which we want to keep under 10 cents of every dollar, but in this situation, they want to see that bundled together, and we're going to talk to, to you, and we've talked to staff preliminarily about a recommendation to what that ratio should look like. I will tell you right now, though, where we are, we know preliminarily that when we bundle those three together, the city looks very strong relative to national indices, and so again, that's important, I just want to let you all know that right now. So lastly, Mr. Workman alluded to some strategies for funding your CIP. Again, when we look at your existing policy, which is that debt service as a percentage of expenditures, I mentioned we like to try to keep it and want to keep it under 10 cents on every dollar. And maybe for the citizens, if I could, give you a perspective, when we talk about these kinds of numbers, what I mean, if someone is fortunate to own a home, and let's say that home has a mortgage on it and has a $100,000 mortgage, in the case of the average citizen here in the United States, the, they like to see, we like to see, not more than 25 cents on every dollar of your income go towards your mortgage, if you would, your mortgage and your, your payments for utilities and, and taxes. So they also say they like to see you pay that over the 30 years. We here in the city tend to borrow debt on a shorter basis than that, so we pay it off much quicker, and as I said, we keep it not at 25 cents of your, if you want to call it your income, but we try to keep it to 10 cents of your income. So again, the goal here is to make sure that... So again, the goal here is to make sure that debt service doesn't overwhelm the city's budgets. And so we're going to talk about some recommended strategies. In fact, I'm going to meet tomorrow with some of your staff as we continue to do that, to be back to you at some reasonable time. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I don't know if the staff wants to say anything, if I've maybe mischaracterized anything. Okay. So thank you.
Do you still have any questions?
Yeah, no, I just have one question. Really, it's a clarification. When you're talking about bundling the debt services, are you talking about current and future liabilities, or just current?
We're talking, the way they look at that, that's a great question, Ms. Boyd, White Boyd, they look at in a particular year, and then they look at it for, let's say, the next three or four years of that multi-year CIP.
Oh.
So they want to see it. Now, they put the most emphasis on the current year.
Okay.
Recognizing that in subsequent years, you can always have some things change. Sometimes the assumptions you've made in terms of growth might change, so what might look to be, let's say, at a certain level, might actually not be there in a couple, three years. But the good thing about the way your staff works is they're very cognizant about all five years, so they're very careful to make sure, okay, and I think, as Mr. Workman alluded to, we see 2025 fiscal year. So even though we're going into '24, we see '25 could be particularly tight, if you would, so we're going to be thinking about how to maybe add some cushion to that in advance of that.
Yes, that makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Prentice?
Mine's maybe a question more for Bob. I know you said discussions were preliminary, but if we're to consider a fixed cost policy, when would we likely consider that? Would it be possible in time to have that considered, maybe when we have our public hearing on the budget, or is this something that's longer?
Typically, we'll do it after the budget approval will come back with those discussions. I don't know if we've developed a timeline yet, because obviously, we want it first to get some reaction from you all as we work our way through, but we should be able, probably by the next meeting, we should have an idea of what that timeline might look like.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think that concludes that, we're done? Right, because that concludes that presentation. We will, of course, be back again before, at your next meeting, with another budget briefing. We're getting quite close to the actual submission of the budget. I know that we have time scheduled with each of you out in April to actually talk individually about what we'll be presenting in later in April for the budget itself, but we'll have one more briefing that we will come to you all in April as well. And our next briefing is, as we have been doing since the beginning of the year, is our monthly budget report for the current budget, and this is the February monthly budget report, and Brent will be presenting this as soon as they find the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council. It's good to be back with you again. Just, excuse me, oh. I'll be brief in my comments, and if there's questions from council, certainly take those. In doing the monthly report, there's really not, I guess, a whole lot to report, other than, I guess I would characterize, the revenue statement of a local government is sort of like going into a foreign film in the middle of it, in a language you don't understand, because there's a lot going on, and so that's, you saw the revenue analysts and such. We look at these revenues every month, basically, because it's, there's a lot going on in that some of those revenues come in, like real estate, twice a year only, personal property one time a year, a number of things, like the bank stock taxes come in once a year, things like that. So we are juggling those. I'm not saying we don't know what those are, but those can come in a lot of different times of the year. So I'd like to start my remarks today by saying all is well with revenues in Reno County. Excuse me, Reno City. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I suspect they're okay in Reno County, but they're better here in Reno City. I'm sorry. 27 years, you just can't go away from there. I'm sorry. So things are good. We're still projecting a fairly healthy surplus at year-end, probably, you know, in the 2%, 3% range. That does change each month when we look through there, but we're very comfortable right now. If you look through some of the items, as we've mentioned before, you'll see the columns that we have, and if you go all the way to the right side, you'll see target, and that's just purely a straight line per month of what we should be, and you'll see a lot of those that are a little below that. And why am I saying we are comfortable with our revenues? Because of those reasons that we talked about. Real estate has only had half of the collections this year to date, even though it shows 43%. We're pretty comfortable that we will have a slight surplus in this year's real estate revenues. Personal property, the same way, you see it 9%. You could panic, but we're not collecting those yet, but that's in the next month or two, that will be a very important time for all of us, especially the Commissioner's Office as he goes through putting that out, and the Treasurer's Office collecting it. So once again, we're okay there. The one I would like to point out, the penalties and interest is up quite a bit. We're projecting several hundred thousand dollar surplus at year-end. I think that may be somewhat indicative of the financial times we're in for a lot of people. I think last year, in a lot of the confusion and chaos, it obviously, penalties and interest went up a bit. We have to take that and put it in the bank. Sales tax, we expect almost a 10% rise over budget compared to last year's numbers. You see, we're only at 58%. They are two months behind in delivering the revenues from the state back to the localities. As we look down through the list, I'll probably kind of stop and see if there's any questions you have, because I could talk individually about a lot of things. I'd like to see what you have for questions, if you have any. Thank you. Once again, Reno City's revenues are good. Appreciate that. The expenditures, really, in a more global statement, it's kind of the same message. Expenditures are good right now as far as the straight-line depreciation, and we have our areas that the analysts work on, we always have that. Just a couple of comments overall. Inflation, we talked about that. I see it, what I read, what I see easing a bit, however, it is still pretty high. We talk about the market basket of goods and CPI. The government doesn't buy out of a market basket of goods, we buy out of a very specialized basket of fire trucks and police cars and garbage trucks. So our costs are high. Departments are controlling that, but the last part of the year will be important to the departments in monitoring their expenditure budgets. You talked about capital project costs, they do remain high. We talked about supply chain issues, probably have moderated a bit, but labor costs are still very, very high in these projects. And staffing still remains difficult. There's a positive side in that we save some expenditure, however, that puts pressure on delivering the services, so we always have to weigh that. We are still having staffing issues, we're working very hard with HR. I know each department now takes a lot of their own initiative to go out and beat the bushes and find good applicants. But we're also having issues with vendors and suppliers and our consultants, who are also having difficulty finding staffing as well. But once again, the message is good here today. I know, but Paul, oh, I'm sorry, I get excited and I forget. There's a error. There is the expenditure side, you'll see. Everything is below 67% except judicial administration, and I believe all their upfront costs finally caught up with them. They front-end loaded a lot of their expenditure budget. So once again, I'll pause for a moment, not talk too much, and see if there's any questions. If not, well, thank you very much. Look forward to talking with you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our, the two briefings that we had. I'll have another item under the comments section at the end, but that ends our briefing, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you all for the report. Well, now, let's, hold me.
I'm just asking, I'll take a break.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Please, if I may.
All right, let's take a five-minute break, we'll come back.
Yeah, we're in overload. We need a break.
Okay.
That's right, I mean...
That's right, I mean...
Yeah, one quick question. I mean, I tried to get through it, but I realized it was 193 pages. I gave up, so I'm glad you gave a brief summary. But Bob, you did mention tiny homes, but you didn't mention it just now. Are they still under consideration?
This is for rental homes as well as owner occupied homes. There are no, nothing that would be classified as tiny homes.
Yeah, it was just mentioned in the action plan. I guess it was as a recommendation.
Yeah, I think it was one of the items that showed up in comments that we received from different parties and different individuals. After all that was said and done, when the groups kind of looked at all of those potential priorities, they decided on the affordable homes themselves.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to comment following up on what the city manager said, if I could. I did read some of it, not all of those pages, but I did look at the summary feedback that was received and the results of some of the upfront consultation. There was a great amount of input from the community on it. So, hopefully that'll have a life beyond just this grant process as we move forward. So, but you think a summary will be possible at some point?
Yes, I think. It's a lot of raw data, so yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to comment, following up on what the city manager said, if I could. I did read some of it, not all of those pages, but I did look at the summary feedback that was received and the results of some of the upfront consultation. There was a governing board joint meeting summary from the continuum of care. There was 28 of them who met, and they focused on revealing a deficit of over, and you all knew this, 3,500 affordable units for people who are considered extremely low income. And their census from their group was that this number is actually a low estimate, and the need for more units is far greater, which we all know. What interested me was the attendance also expressed frustration with the landlords pricing out renters in an effort to only house quality renters. And I thought that was of interest. The areas to focus efforts included better coordination between private sectors, nonprofits, and the city, and increasing staff capacity to provide quality case management services, improved city planning between economic development and housing, improved city planning around affordable housing, and also increased incentives from the city for more affordable housing development. And then, under the service provider summary, there were 16 of them, and they asked to rank for home op funds providers prior to its funds as follows. They said, one, build more rental housing; two, create more non-congregate shelter; three, provide additional supportive services; four, provide financial assistance as tenant-based rental assistance; and last, under the city leadership survey summary, 24 staff from the city leadership responded to the online survey, and their survey responses demonstrate a need to improve discussions on comprehensive housing planning and affordable housing needs. And they also said staff consistently mentioned the need for zoning reform incentivizing affordable housing development, and nimbyism challenges.
Yeah, not in my backyard, right.
Challenges and a need for coordinated effort within the city.
Yeah, and it actually does probably do things. It really highlights the challenge that is present in the community. And again, we're not unique in this regard. It's across the entire country regarding affordable housing. There are two significant gaps that we've shared with you all before. One of those is the deep need for subsidized housing, which is highly unlikely to ever be provided by the private sector. That's housing that typically has been provided by the housing authority. And then, the other side of it is at-scale affordable housing. And so, even as significant as this grant is, and significant as the other partnerships we have with Habitat and others, the only real way we're going to actually be able to address affordable housing in any significant way is for the market to respond. And so, the other side of what you shared in that information is all of the other steps that are also being taken, some of which have already been taken, some of which will be coming forward to you to try and address any kind of regulatory barriers that might exist. The one example we've given before is when Chris Chidham and the planning group brought forward an amendment that actually changed the zoning on multifamily properties that allowed by, I'm sorry, on commercial properties for hotels that allowed by right redevelopment of those as multifamily. So, think of the Sheraton location. That was significant because that owner was able to convert what was a failed hotel into a new multifamily project without having to seek a rezoning. So, that's an example, but there are others that will be coming forward. Mr. Volason has, of course, been involved in a conversation regarding, it's not on the incentive side, it's kind of more on the requirement side and looking at inclusionary zoning. So, there are still several additional steps in addition to this that are going to be necessary locally, regionally, and at the state level as well.
Mr. Cal, can I ask you a question? It may be, I mean, it's probably totally unrelated, but is there a way that we can look at the rental fees for applications? Because I don't know who controls that. I don't think it's anything we can do locally, but is that something we need to add to our legislative agenda?
Yeah, you're talking about the rent fees that privately are charged.
Yeah, $50 every application. You're at 250, and you've only applied for, you know...
Approval of the HomeOP allocation plan and amendment to the 2020, 2024 HUD five, five-year consolidated plan. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the City of Roanoke's proposed Home American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, allocation plan of additional grant funding provided to the city by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Home Investment Partnership Grant Program in the amount of $2,449,336, authorizing certain amendments to the city's 2020 through 2024 five-year HUD consolidated plan, authorizing the city manager or the city manager's designee to execute all necessary documents and take such actions required for such amendments, and to accept such funding, and further authorizing the city manager or the city manager's designee to submit such amendments to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for final review and approval.
Thank you. I'm going to call on the city manager.
Sure. I'll give you an update from the last time. It is covered in the council report as well, and maybe this will answer some of the, any of the questions that you might have. You will note from when we presented this information in briefing and then in the public hearing, based off of information that we received from those, from the discussion that you all had, as well as the discussion at the public hearing, and then subsequent conversations that staff had with HUD staff as well, that the number of housing units has gone up. So there is now a total of 50 housing units as a part of this program. The supportive services are still being provided. They're just being provided at a lower level, and that was again based off of those informations. So the program is now for a total target of 50 housing units, as well as again the supportive services that would go with the individuals that would be moving into those housing units. This is, again, as a reminder, this is a combination of the specialized home ARPA funds and then the ARPA funds that we had designated to address affordable housing issues as well. I'm happy to answer your questions. I know Keith and Matt and others are here as well that could maybe answer more specific questions if I'm not able to. Thank you.
Yeah, one quick question. I mean, I tried to get through it, but I realized it was 193 pages. I gave up, so I'm glad you gave a brief summary. But Bob, you did mention tiny homes, but you didn't mention it just now. Are they still under consideration?
This is for multifor rental homes as well as owner-occupied homes. There are no, nothing that would be classified as tiny homes.
Yeah, it was just mentioned in the action plan. I guess it was as a recommendation.
Yeah, I think it was. It was one of the items that showed up in comments that we received from different parties and different individuals. After all that was said and done, when the groups kind of looked at all of those potential priorities, they set it in on the affordable homes themselves.
Any other comment, Mr. Volson?
I think this might be more for Mr. Holland, but the reason that that document was 193 pages was the great amount of input that we received from the community. And I was wondering if there's any analysis that's been done of the comments on there, because some good ideas in there.
A summary would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. You know, unfortunately, the other reason it's 197 pages is HUD dictates the format of what's in there. That's why you also said.
That makes sense now, though.
So we are required to present to HUD the raw information on it, but absolutely not only are we assessing what comments came through, because it was actually a remarkable response that we got from the community on it, so is the continuation of care folks. They're looking at it as well. And all of our partners that work in this area of affordable housing, as well as homelessness, also have access to all of that information, all of those responses. And there were also a couple of studies that were done as well tied with housing needs. That has also been made available to all of those parties as well. So hopefully that'll have a life beyond just this grant process as we move forward.
So you think a summary will be possible at some point?
Yes, I think. It's a lot of raw data, so yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to comment, following up on what the city manager said, if I could. I did read some of it, not all of those pages, but I did look at the summary feedback that was received and the results of some of the upfront consultation. There was a governing board joint meeting summary from the continuum of care. There was 28 of them who met, and they focused on revealing a deficit of over, and you all knew this, 3,500 affordable units for people who are considered extremely low income. And their census from that group was that this number is actually a low estimate, and the need for more units is far greater, which we all know. What interested me was the attendants also expressed frustration with the landlords pricing out renters in an effort to only house quality renters. And I thought that was of interest. The areas to focus efforts included better coordination between private sectors, nonprofits, and the city, and increase in staff capacity to provide quality case management services, improved city planning between economic development and housing, improved city planning around affordable housing, and also increased incentives from the city for more affordable housing development. And then, under the service provider summary, there were 16 of them, and they asked to rank, they were asked to rank for home ARPA funds providers prior to its funds as follows. They said, one, build more rental housing; two, create more non-congregate shelter; three, provide additional supportive services; four, provide financial assistance as tenant-based rental assistance; and last, under city leadership survey summary, 24 staff from the city leadership responded to the online survey, and their survey respondents demonstrate a need to improve discussions on comprehensive housing planning and affordable housing needs. And they also said staff consistently mentioned the need for zoning reform, incentivizing affordable housing development, and nimbyism challenges. Yeah, not in my backyard, right. Challenges and a need for coordinated effort within the city. Which I thought all of that was very interesting to take in.
Absolutely, and it actually does probably do things. It really highlights the challenge that is present in the community. And again, we're not unique in this regard. It's across the entire country regarding affordable housing. There are two significant gaps that we've shared with you all before. One of those is the deep need for subsidized housing, which is highly unlikely to ever be provided by the private sector. That's housing that typically has been provided by the housing authority. And then the other side of it is at-scale affordable housing. And so even as significant as this grant is, and significant as the other partnerships we have with Habitat and others, the only real way we're going to actually be able to address affordable housing in any significant way is for the market to respond. And so the other side of what you shared in that information is all of the other steps that are also being taken, some of which have already been taken, some of which will be coming forward to you, to try and address any kind of regulatory barriers that might exist. The one example we've given before is when Chris Chidham and the planning group brought forward an amendment that actually changed the zoning on multifamily properties that allowed by, I'm sorry, on commercial properties for hotels that allowed by right redevelopment of those as multifamily. So think of the Sheraton location. That was significant because that owner was able to convert what was a failed hotel into a new multifamily project without having to seek a rezoning. So that's an example, but there are others that will be coming forward. Mr. Volson has, of course, been involved in a conversation regarding, it's not on the incentive side, it's kind of more on the requirement side and looking at inclusionary zoning. So there's still several additional steps in addition to this that are going to be necessary locally, regionally, and at the state level as well.
Mr. Cal, can I ask you a question? It may be, I mean, it's probably totally unrelated, but is there a way that we can look at the rental fees for applications? Because I don't know who controls that. I don't think it's anything we can do locally, but is that something we need to add to our legislative agenda? Because.
Yeah, you're talking about the rent fees that privately are charged.
Yeah, $50 every application. You're at 250, and you've only applied for, you know, five apartments, and sometimes up to $100. It's astronomical.
I don't know. We can find, I don't know that there's any regulatory, it would definitely be at the state level, not at the local level. I don't know even at the state level if there's any regulatory. I do know typically, they all use the same forms typically with it, but I.
But the amounts vary.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm guessing that there's not anything at the state level currently that sets any kind of maximum, if you will, with that. So if there was something to address that, it would come through your legislative agenda to try to actually talk through with that, because I don't think it's something that could be controlled locally.
Yeah, I need to do a better job following up. I think I brought that up several years ago, and I didn't follow up, but I will this time. We need to figure out if there's a way to address that.
And also, is there any properties, abandoned properties around the city that the city would be interested in purchasing to work with Economic Development Authority to make into affordable housing? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts on that. I mean, one is, you know, that, our approach so far has been to actually provide funding to our nonprofit partners. So with your help, we've been able to provide funding to Habitat and Restoration Housing and a few others to do that. We were in conversations at one point with the housing authority about acquiring, about jointly figuring out a way to purchase and develop a property in order for them to develop some additional subsidized housing. That hasn't progressed any further, but that would probably be the kind of conversation, unless there was an ordinance that was incorporated into some kind of inclusionary where you would get it as private sector started to redevelop, which is something we'll be bringing back to you all in the future as well.
So is the city, and I can't recall, partnering with the housing authority on the 76 units?
We haven't had any, they've not, not in months have we had any further discussions with them. I don't know, I don't know if they're proceeding with a project or not.
Right, okay. I'll follow up with them on that one. Thank you.
Sure.
While we're still under discussion, can you define what's a quality renter?
What is a quality renter?
Yeah, I think that was one of the things they alluded to.
Yeah, I think that was in the comments that came from the, from the, from the public, I think, regarding it, that, you know, their concern was that there were, rents were being raised in order to ensure that the quality of renter met some sort of standard. What I take that to mean is what they're saying is rents are being raised for folks that can pay those higher rents, is really what it is. That's basically, but that comment actually came from some of the public comment that we received.
Mr. Cal, one more quick question, because one leads to another. With that, you were going to check to see why we have rental inspections in certain quadrants of the city. Were you all able to determine why we don't do rental inspections throughout the entire city?
Yeah, I don't know if Chris still, Chris want to, yeah.
I was curious, because that just doesn't make sense to me, and then you would have a slumlord in some other part.
And I know one, I know one brief part of that answer, which is I know that the state law changed a few years ago relative to the frequency of those inspections, but.
Right. And so rental inspections are enabled in rental inspection districts, and these are state-created districts, or the criteria are established at the state.
Oh, at the state level.
And so we have to show, certainly, we have to use our census information, our housing information, to show that there's deterioration in housing, or some conditions in housing that would warrant that. So, and we do have areas that come and go, where we see apartment complexes where we get a lot of calls. We'll start to look at that and say, okay, well, we're seeing deteriorated conditions in a particular area, or even a single property that has a lot of units on it, and we'll designate that as a rental inspection district until it's stabilized, if it becomes stabilized. So it would be pretty difficult to make the case for those, the conditions that the state requires in all of our neighborhoods. And so we're really, we really have to show conditions are kind of going the wrong way.
Okay, unless we make that also a part of our legislative agenda.
Well, yeah, we have to make that finding locally.
To make a change, I mean, we have to address it through our legislative agenda, or ask for that, because I do think it would be appropriate. I mean, Peter and I were just chatting, because there are individual homes, I mean, you know, single-family homes in all parts of the city that renters are complaining because they're not being addressed properly, because they don't have to have those rental inspections. And so to me, that is just, it just doesn't make sense.
We do have the ability, if a tenant does call us, to respond and ensure, we have the rental, the Virginia Maintenance Code, we have adopted that locally. So we can enforce that citywide.
So you can enforce it, we just don't do regular inspections.
That's correct.
So they have to call.
Yes.
Yeah, they should be required to do inspections, so they don't get into that situation. But anyway, maybe that's something we can talk about in our legislative committee. Thank you, Chris.
All right, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, I think you're ready to call a roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. Out of me is the execution of amendment number one to the, of the contract for the sale of Old Dalton Road Northeast to TPB Enterprises LLC. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute amendment number one to the contract for purchase and sale of real property identified as Zero Dalton Road Northeast, Roanoke, Virginia. Official tax map number 7130123, dated November 22, 2022, between the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and the TPB Enterprises LLC.
All right. Any discussion from council? Right now, Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Out of me is an approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Roanoke and the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for funds to be used for the Roanoke Biotech Project. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of biotech funds from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Roanoke, Virginia, and the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for acceptance and use of funds for renovation of an existing facility for the development of new biotechnology companies, authorizing the execution of necessary documents upon certain terms and conditions, authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute such MOU, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to take such further action as may be necessary to implement and comply with such MOU.
All right. Any discussion with council, Mr. Pretty?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to thank all the people that were involved in this and the vision that it took to get here. The local leaders, Aaron Vertrum, Roanoke Blackspur Technology Corporation, Mark Nelson, for seeing this and his leadership there, and Roanoke City Council for having the foresight to include this in their 2022 legislative agenda. And then last, our members of the General Assembly, who were able to make sure that this appropriation was gotten for a locality. I don't think what's touted enough about this particular project, while there were a couple of projects that were picked in the state, we got the best cost match. Every other locality or program had to pay $1 per $1, but the City of Roanoke, thanks to leadership locally and at the state level, were able to put in $2 million and get about 16 million returned. And I think that's a great return for our value, and this is going to have a great impact on our economy going forward.
Yeah, and I certainly would echo that. I think that, and this is also, as long as this is taken to get this, this is also, unfortunately, only the first of a set of agreements that you'll be seeing as you come along. But the most important thing is this actually allows the money to finally be transferred from the state. I would like to call out that we had a lot of help from folks at the, in the General Assembly, but Delegate Austin was particularly helpful in this regard, especially given that he doesn't represent our area. He was actually a champion of this project, because he understands the regional impact of this project as well. So certainly want to acknowledge that.
Mr. Mayor, let me make a nod to, when Bob updated the strategic plan this year, he even updated part of it to say biomedical instead of medical for the economies that focus in our region.
And Mr. Mayor, just for clarity and transparency, for the public to understand what we are referring to, Bob, could you just give a little bit of information, background on the appropriation that came from the state, and then the amount that the city's giving, and what it is going towards?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have, we requested and received, not in this year's budget bill, but actually last year's budget bill, $15,716,344 from the state. We were required on our part to match that with $1,955,000, almost $2 million. We're actually using part of our ARPA fundings to match that, because this is actually going toward a shared lab project, and that share is coming from a partnership between Carillion Clinic, Verge, Virginia Western Community College, Fralen Biomedical Research Institute, and the Virginia Tech Corporate Research Center, and Johnson Labs, all of which were involved, obviously, in a lot of the work around COVID. This will not be COVID-related directly, but certainly we'll be able to do the other piece of it. It's taking an existing building that's on Jefferson. It will be completely renovating it so that it can be used for work that these, that research is going on at the institute, and actually take place here as a part of the commercialization efforts that Johnson Labs helps support, partly out of their operations in Northern Virginia, so it strengthens that relationship as well as it works its way through. The reason for some of the other partners, like Virginia Western Community College and others, is there is also a, both an entrepreneurial component to this, as well as a job training component attached to it as well. So it has a whole collection of benefit. The partnership, I don't want to understate the partnership that came from Carillion and from the Virginia Tech Corporate Research Center as well, because this building is currently owned by Carillion, and Carillion is actually contributing as a part of this in exchange of the real estate to this effort as well. So there's a variety of partners advancing it. It'll probably take close to two years to finish the work on it, and then it'll be open. And again, it'll strengthen that pipeline that we currently have with Johnson Labs, as well as the Research Institute.
And this building, that is the one at Albemarle and Jefferson?
Yeah, so if you see the.
It used to be the former IBM.
Right, everybody refers to it as the former IBM. It's the black building, basically, black glass building.
Just wanted them to know that that's where it's at when we talk about.
That's the building.
Thank you.
What was it?
Well, I like that, and I think it's good news. I want to make sure that the average citizen out there understands what this is. How does it affect me? How does it affect the average citizen? I think that's important.
Yeah, and the key is, if I were going to just narrow it down, for $2 million, we're getting $16 million. That's going into a building that will allow research that's currently going on to actually move out of the lab and into business development. So that's really the purpose of this project. And it's in partnership with Johnson Labs. It has a much bigger focus on that out of Northern Virginia, partnered with the university as well. So has a, has a real good potential of helping a number of startup biomedical businesses here actually succeed.
And I noticed in your report, you mentioned there's opportunities for job creation, wage growth, business creation, and positive economic outcomes for the Commonwealth.
Especially, yes, it will benefit the entire state and our local residents as well.
So good thing, yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes, and we now have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the state of Virginia for creating a stronger technology and biotech economy in the city of Roanoke, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 grant funds appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Is any discussion by members of council? Right now, let's, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. I'm pleased to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
Thank you, and I know we've had a group of people here waiting anxiously.
If we could, please, we have item G that we are asking mayor be moved to tonight's meeting. There are a number of interested citizens that couldn't make it this afternoon, and ask that the approval to rename Carver Avenue be moved to the 7 o'clock meeting. That will require a motion?
I make the motion to move item 71G to 7 o'clock PM session of council.
All right, do we just vote on that? I was told that we won't move on it, do anything on this.
If you could vote on it, please.
Yes, we can. Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volson?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and this resolution will be dealt with this evening. All right, now are we ready for the city manager to come?
We're ready, so, and as I started to say, that we've had a group of folks here very patiently waiting, so we won't take much time with this, and actually, in the interest of time, I'm actually, I had two items that I was going to mention. We'll suspend that and deal with one item, which is good. You all know periodically we've come forward to you with updates on how our diversity action plans are going on. Each of the departments have a diversity action plan, and each of the departments are responsible for implementing those. And periodically, we'll bring examples of how that's making a difference in how we operate within the organization. I had two of those tonight. One of them was to highlight the HBCU event that we recently had at the Melrose, and I'll bring that at a later meeting, just in the interest of time. But the second item is one actually that the police chief and the police department have led as a part of their action plan, that I wanted to give them the opportunity to share with you, both an overview of it, and then there's a video that is attached with it as well. So that will constitute my comments for this evening, so chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. We won't wear your patience, so we have only prepared a two-hour presentation for you today.
Can't wait.
We actually have an 11-minute presentation for you, and I think we can shave that down to maybe nine minutes or so. But we just wanted to share with you, oftentimes I stand at this very podium and share news, prosecutorial news with you, and other incidents of gun violence. And we want to take this opportunity to really share with you some of the things that we're very excited about at the police department. So with that being said, we have been working with a consultant, Ms. Ebony Gammon. She's going to introduce herself momentarily, and she should get the PowerPoint presentation ready. You'll see here, one of my goals was to really expand training for police officers outside of the four walls of the police academy. And you've heard me say that many times before. We're very fortunate here in Roanoke. We have our own police academy, and we can really tailor our training, not only to DCJS standards, but really tailor our training to our community's expectations. And we think that the endeavor in which we're about to share with you is one of our community expectations, as well as part of our DEI action plan as well. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Gammon. She will introduce herself more formally to you all.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present today, and thank you for your time and just hearing this quick presentation. I will make it as succinct as possible on cultural intelligence in policing. Quickly to run through our agenda, I'll tell you just a quick second about who I am. We'll look at what law enforcement culture values, and look at some foundational knowledge about training academies, before we wrap up by talking about Chief Roman's Cultural Enrichment Initiative. So here I am, I'm the consultant. I don't have to read any of my education, but I will tell you that my diversity, equity, and inclusion experience is specific in particular to colleges and universities and religious institutions, but I am uniquely qualified to consult on. religious institutions, but I am uniquely qualified to consult on this project because I used to be a police officer here. And so I understand the culture and the enrichment that's necessary. So let me first just give you a quick background on law enforcement culture. Work cultures embody and have values around different things. Some cultures are particular to performance, others are particular to learning. Your culture here on the council looks more enterprise. And so law enforcement as a whole values performance. We train officers to go out and answer calls, to affect arrests. All of those things are performance-based. There is another culture that is very useful and very important to law enforcement, and that's the learning culture, which values acquiring new information, assimilating that into your working skills, and then applying it out in the field. And that's really what Chief, Chief Roman's vision has revolved and evolved around, is really educating the officers. One thing I want you to take away from this slide is that you can train a person to do something, but you educate a person to apply information, and that is very powerful. So here's some foundational knowledge around training academies. The Department of Jur-, excuse me, the Bureau of Justice acclimates and collates this information every five years. So you see 2018, but this is their most recent report from 2021. And you'll see on the left-hand side, recruit instruction. That's the performance modalities that they, all officers go through. So they're looking at report writing, defensive tactics, firearm skills, and those are performance-initiated, meaning that they need to have certainty and quality in executing those tasks. You'll see at the bottom, more than 90% of recruits receive training in the learning modalities. That's de-escalation and cultural diversity. One of the big things that we should note is that not all officers receive that training, which is probably pretty interesting to, to figure out, to know. But that training, in comparison to what they do, there's a significant gap there, and that is what Chief Roman has identified. I'll draw your eyes over to the right-hand side. The average police academy training hours, eight hundred and thirty-three. Some departments had a thousand hours, some had six hundred. And then the DCJS required continuing education hours is roughly 20 hours per year, per officer. So you can have an officer go through the training academy and receive roughly 14 hours of cultural diversity training and then never see that again. And they're expected to go out and police the public and engage with individuals from varying cultures and populations without additional information. And that brings us to, how do you mesh that? How do you mesh performance and learning? How do you pull them together seamlessly and make them integrate? And you do that through cultural immersion experiences. That's how that comes to pass. And so that's really important to know and understand when thinking about Chief Roman's Cultural Enrichment Initiative. So he was in a leadership executive, executive leadership academy and he visited the Holocaust Memorial Museum, and it had such a profound impact on him that he thought, I need to take this back to every officer in my department and try it out and specifically include it with the recruit division of the police department, so that officers are coming in and they're understanding that this is the, the gold standard for how they are to conduct themselves. The purpose is to engage officers, get them out of the classroom while they're training, and allow them to have immersive experiences that let them see what happens when their action or inaction impacts their community. The vision is very clear. It establishes department culture that recognizes and values cultural diversity. Both of those things are very important. Curates a safety-forward approach that more information creates better preparation and better application. So the more information that we give our officers, the more we educate them, the better they are prepared to answer the calls in the community and meet the needs of the community and apply what they know. And lastly, to establish a culturally-rich toolbox and develop culturally-intelligent decision-making. At the end of the day, officers are tasked with decision-making and it is important that those immersive experiences that they have, that that is what they pull from to make those decisions. So I will let you watch this video that just gives you kind of a synopsis of what happened with the trip.
Today we're in Washington, DC, visiting the United States.
I think if you could do this.
Part of what we call cultural enrichment for our academy recruits. Goal here is to, to get them out and to let them see some different sides of the people that we're dealing with and some of their histories and, and hopefully help them learn how to interact with folks and utilize this during their, their day-to-day interactions with people.
The reason why we wanted to come is to get to experience the museum and see and feel in a very tangible way what some people endured. And what I love about the museum is they do that in such a way where it, it really just, it draws you in, help you to understand what people were going through at the time.
Ask you questions, answer questions. This is, this is going to be the conversation.
This was my first time coming to a Holocaust museum. It was definitely eye-opening. I didn't realize that the Germans utilized the law enforcement in the country to help with the Holocaust. Coming here, I realized that the school systems only really teach you about the perpetrators of the Holocaust. They don't ever focus on the victims and their stories. And it's something I think is very crucial in everybody's lives as far as understanding different cultures.
Two pictures come to mind, one at the beginning of the tour where there's two officers standing there, the regular police officer and, you know, the newly-minted SA. And they're standing there, German citizens are around them, they're all happy in the photo. And then a couple of years later, there's another photo of, you know, the same group of officers, you know, leading people, Jewish people through the streets, shaming them for, you know, simple acts that anyone does. And, you know, the German people around, it's like, oh, this is what we're doing now. You know, they're not, they're confused as to what's going on, but, you know, nobody's shocked or outraged. You just see mild confusion and acceptance.
After the tour of the museum, now we move on to a facilitated conversation in which we talk a little bit about law enforcement role. What role did complacency play? What role, you know, did law enforcement have in, in this particular time in history?
Because it's getting happened over and over. It took so many groups to go along.
One of the most important duties of a police officer is to be trusted. It's not like an aside. It's not like if you could do this plus do your job. This is a simple thing. If you're not trusted, you're going to fail. It's imperative for people who serve to feel as though you're approachable, you're friendly, that if they come up to you, you will do exactly what they expect them to have you do as a police officer. Trust is essentially the thing that so often in the past has been missing. Many police see with fear, having criminals particularly fear that was, was important. It's not. Centrally and being trusted, being seen as fair is the most important thing you can be doing as a police officer.
It's definitely a lot more mental than I assumed. I know this job is going to be very physical and like outside of just having, like you need to have good memory with it. You're, you're really attacked mentally with this job. You're going to see a lot of different things than I already have, just being on various ride-alongs. It's really eye-opening to what police officers have to deal with on a daily basis.
This is not just a history of museum, but it is also a history of the future, right? We don't just analyze what happened, but we also analyze moving forward, not just in relation to the Holocaust, but what could we do to improve and make sure that we don't contribute to any kind of inconsistencies that we see demonstrated here.
Our goal is to, to get the recruits out of the classroom, to see their communities, to branch out, to learn more about the folks that they're going to be policing. Roanoke, we have a very diverse community. We're very lucky there, that we have that diverse community. So we want our recruits to understand on the folks that they're going to be interacting with on a day-to-day basis. We have done several activities. We've, we've gone and done a walk in downtown Gainesboro, so they can see, you know, a lot of that rich history in Northwest Roanoke. We're branching out a little further here into DC. We, we want to hit every part of society so they know what, who they're going to be interacting with.
Listen, it's imperative that police are exposed to things outside of their classroom because it's very easy to look at these as being textbooks. When you go to a Holocaust museum, you see lives that were affected by government decisions. It's critically important for police to look at every human being as a human being, as a human being who, you know, has family, who has thoughts, who has aspirations.
We're training tomorrow's leaders to lead today, and I think today is an example of that. My hope is that a newer officer, looking back on the experience that they had today, is able to correlate what they seen, what they experienced, and what we discussed into everyday policing, and that's what it's all about. How do we produce the best officer? I'm very happy to say that here in Roanoke, we try our very best to make sure that our officers are the best and well-trained.
Okay, and so you can take away from that video how powerful this experience is. I want to help you all understand how groundbreaking this is, forward-thinking, progressive this is, for a chief to come in, recognize that there is a significant deficit that will impact the community for generations to come, and then do something about it. This is really a transformative program and initiative that Chief Roman has undertaken, and I would not be surprised if something like this took, took off and went across the country. When he asked me to consult on this project, I first, of course, did my research, and I could not find anything like this. The closest thing I found was one initiative in Minneapolis where it's just one course and that's it, and those officers can take that course. I'm sure there are many other things out there, but nothing that has a protensive approach, where it's consistent and comprehensive. In the future, Chief Roman will be having the officers go again to the Holocaust Museum, to the African-American Museum, and to the National Police Museum, so that they, their knowledge is enriched and they can apply that enriched knowledge when they interact with the citizens of Roanoke. Just to wrap up before I have Chief Roman come back, he said we don't simply analyze what has happened, we analyze our future actions. That's very important, that officers analyze their future actions so that we can improve and make sure that we do not contribute to any of the inconsistencies that the officers observed at the Holocaust Museum. So thank you so much for your time today. I hope that this presentation demonstrated to you how impactful this initiative will be for the officers that serve your community. Chief Roman?
Well, thank you. That's our presentation. I certainly wanted to maybe introduce my staff to you and take any questions you may have about this endeavor, but we're excited that this is just the beginning. We're looking for, we're currently working with the African-American Museum to create a curriculum such as this, so our officers can have that experience as well. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce the academy director. He is in charge of all of the training for our officers, and that is Lieutenant Ashby. And then, of course, we have our two deputy chiefs, Deputy Chief Dave Morris and Deputy Chief Jerome Stokes, and I believe our, there she is, Caitlin, our public information officer that helps us tremendously at the police department. With that being said, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, Chief, I'll start over from this because I'm normally the last to get around. I'll take the privilege of starting on this, but I think that's awesome. Thank you for your commitment in doing that, and I'm pleased to see that we're still working in that direction because I spoke to some friends of mine over the weekend, and particular one from St. Louis, Missouri, and they are still on the reforming police. They, really, they're making some things that I think is contrary to where most in this country wants to go, but thank you for doing that and I think it, it means a lot and it shows a lot, and so we appreciate your leadership in doing that. And you would think that, especially in urban areas, that, that, that will be the focal point of what's happening, given what has happened over the last year or two. But it still seems some hardliners out there that still, well, not hardliners, it's the opposite side of it, that think police should be reformed and intermingled with social services and a lot of those kind of things. But thank you for that and your leadership in that area. And thank you to your consultant there. I see your background a lot is, I see you went to Roanoke College in Radford and now at Liberty, so you're familiar with that, and you're a police officer.
I was.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Pretty?
Thank you for the wonderful presentation, first off, dear consultant, and thank you for coming here today to share that with us. Again, I had the opportunity to see the video a few weeks ago at a director's meeting. At the time, I'd asked you a question about some of the remaining points that we're, haven't yet gotten on the Human Rights Campaign. Municipal Equality Index is on having an LGBT liaison within the police department. You had reported at the time, I should hear something soon. I'm wondering if there's anything related to this or what initiatives are being worked on in the department to work with groups like the LGBTQ History Project to do walking tours in the area? If you give me any, any updates on, on that area.
Absolutely. We are definitely interested in having a liaison at the police department. In fact, Deputy Chief Stokes is working on that as we speak, and we should be able to make an announcement pretty soon of who that liaison would be. And Lieutenant Ashby, throughout the course curriculum for our academy, we designate certain days to, for cultural enrichment. It can be as grand, of course, it takes a day to two trips to do something like the DC trip, but we also have shorter versions, the four-hour blocks, where we do things like take walking tours with Jordan Bell, and we'll also be looking for other opportunities. Just as you mentioned, officers in the past have done everything from the Jordan Bell Tour and understanding the rich history in Northwest, all the way to visiting and participating in rescue mission activities and understanding the operation and the impact that an organization like that has on our community. So yes, we will definitely be looking for opportunities such as that.
Thank you so much, Chief Roman. And as antisemitism is on the rise, projects like this are very important. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Chief Roman, have they, have the officers spent any time in certain neighborhoods of, of our city, meeting with the residents, whether it's over at Park Down Apartments or at Westwood Village?
Sure, I can give you numerous circumstances, situations where officers are out talking with our communities, whether it be in different blocks or, or different neighborhoods or at neighborhood meetings. One of the things I can say is that one of the ideas that Deputy Chief Morris has recently had is really utilizing the talent we have in the police department. So one of his ideas, obviously, we've talked about it before, is the Hispanic officers that we have at the department. What a great asset to help them lead an initiative in our Hispanic communities and really facilitate communication, you know, not only between those officers, but our hope is that it would extend throughout all of the ranks of the police department. But what a great start to utilize our Hispanic officers to bridge that gap, if you would. So he is also currently working on that, and I can kind of feel them behind me saying, we have a long list of work to do.
I'm here to help, Captain Morris.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Deputy Chief?
Deputy Chief Morris.
Sorry.
Yes.
Chief, I just want to thank you. This is very visionary. It's very impactful. I hope it becomes a model nationally, maybe globally, because I think being aware of how different people in our communities have been treated historically and how we don't want to see that repeat itself and how we can challenge it in meaningful ways. But I think what you've also shown here is that the way we reduce violence in any form is by learning how to respect each other, by restoring honesty, integrity, and, and love in our relationships. That's ultimately what's going to change and reduce violence. We can throw everything at it we want to, but, but starting with training and helping not only our police, but all of us, see each other differently and honor each other differently will make a significant impact. So I really want to commend you and Ms. Gammon for your work and the whole staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Chief Roman, thank you so much for what you've done and your staff for what you've done with this initiative. One question that I have is, you know, we do this with trainees. What about our current staff? I feel like this would be a great thing for some of our folks to go through, well, actually all of our folks to go through, since it is such a benefit to our, our new trainees. Is there a way for us to, to expand this program to our actual people who are already serving?
Yes, absolutely. That is our goal. That would be the, the long-term goal. We have already obviously discussed with our consultant that it just doesn't stop with our newer officers coming into the academy. We see that as the foundational impartation with those officers. And then, obviously, when they are introduced to the culture of the police department, we want the culture to be acutely aware of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so our goal is also to make this long-term training, not just academy training, which would include all current employees as well. Great question, though, thank you. thank you.
All right. Chief, I want you to introduce us. There's another young lady that's sitting over there beside you, and I don't see her. Can you tell us who she may be?
She is.
Yeah, yeah. Well, many people think that the city manager is my boss, and in some ways, he, he is. However, I have a, another boss, and her name is Sonia Roman.
Hello, it's Roman.
Lovely wife of nearly 30 years, who currently is the 911 manager, so.
Yeah. All right. That's what I wanted to get out. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
And there concludes the comments. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Again, we will do this periodically, bring forward to you examples of our equity action plans in action, um, so certainly we'll continue to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, where are we?
We are at item eight-one, reports of committees.
All right, which is a, a report of the Roanoke City School Board requesting appropriation of funds for various educational programs, and a report of the city manager recommending that council concur in the request. Donna Caldwell, Director of Accounting, is the spokesperson. Does the budget ordinance?
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth, federal, and private grant for various educational programs, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2022, 2023 school grant funds appropriation, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion among members of council? All right. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. A report of certain authority boards, committees, and commissions in which city councils serve as liaison or appointees. Are there any comments by city council on that?
Chad Warren.
All right, Ms. Moon.
As liaison to the Housing Authority, I just want to announce that the City of Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority, uh, will be accepting, uh, applications for the annual Melody Stovall Scholarship Competition. Uh, the scholarships will be awarded in amounts of $1,000. Selection will be based on grades, community service, the strength of career, goals, articulation, and need. Housing Authority wants to remind the applicants that neatness counts. If your application is incomplete or ineligible, it will not be considered. Uh, you must be accepted or have an acceptance pending to an accredited college, university, or accredited business school for consideration. The firm deadline for submission of completed applications is Friday, May 5, 2023, at 5:00 PM at the main office of the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Feel free to contact the Housing Authority should you have questions or desire additional information. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be real quick, Mayor. This is important. We gotta get our scholarship information out. I just wanted to announce that the, um, Roanoke Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority has its 2023 scholarship application live on our website. It is roanokealumneydst.org, and the application deadline is April 15th, and there is a direct link on that website. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Pretty?
Mr. Mayor, just something brief to report with the Legislative Committee. The Executive Committee members, the vice chair and I, should be meeting sometime in the next week to discuss what the next year will look like. And, um, upon, um, speaking with a member of Adana Strategies, we, we may have an opportunity this year to do something that we normally don't, because the, um, the timing of our next meeting will allow us an opportunity to see what the vetoes and amendments are that the governor puts forward to legislation, and if this council has a position on any of those items, that might be the appropriate time, and we could get a very brief update on where our items stand, um, in the current General Assembly session, because as it looks, um, laws will be going to affect July 1st. Um, the, the word is that we probably won't have a budget by then. Sorry, everyone, but we'll find out. Um, but, but more on that will happen next week and hopefully by April 3rd.
Okay. Thank you. That lends itself to another question, but I won't go there. Everybody will talk about that, uh, a little time, but no budget. But, uh, item number nine, is any unfinished business? We have none. Item number 10 is introduction and considerations of ordinance and resolutions. Uh, we have 10-1, which is a resolution confirming the city manager's appointment of an assistant city manager.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the paragraph?
Yes, sir. A resolution confirming the appointments of Angela L. O'Brien and Samuel Roman Jr. to the position of Assistant City Manager, and providing an effective date for their respective appointments.
All right. Any discussion here about members of council?
If I may, just to sort of clarify what we're doing here. So, um, as, as you all know, and as I think most of the folks in the community know, is that our Deputy City Manager, Clarence Greer, um, has, uh, left us to go assume a county administrator role, so a move up for him in North Carolina, and so that caused us to begin recruitment, um, for his replacement. And, um, and, and I couldn't be more excited or prouder of the two folks that we have, that I have selected for this. And the reason I say two is because with your support, we've been able to actually, um, add another assistant city manager within the organization, which will, which is allowing me to make both of these appointments. Um, Angela O'Brien will begin upon confirmation immediately, effectively tomorrow. Um, Sam with, with confirmation today will begin in July, um, in this role. The reason for July is, as you can imagine, as Sam just presented, Sam has a, has another very important job within the organization. He is, he, so we will be seeking the replacement for chief between now and July, um, as we go through that process. And of course, um, we also have an organizational assessment underway that Sam is helping us with as well. So that is part of the reason for the July 1st. But again, I couldn't be more pleased with the contributions that both of these folks, you just saw, um, an example of that, both of these folks have made within the organization. Um, in Angie's case, 20-plus years, um, in the organization. Sam's case, more than 25 years in the organization. Um, it is, um, quite, um, quite a positive to be able to attract, um, that kind of talent from within the organization into these two roles, and I know that they will serve us very, very well, um, going into the future. And I also want to thank you all. I've talked with each of you individually multiple times. Um, I want to thank you for your support, um, not only in these choices that I've made, but also in the willingness to actually add this additional position, um, and, um, look forward to what, what's, uh, what lies ahead with us. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
I just wanted to congratulate both on their, uh, appointments, uh, moving up into the, uh, into the organization. Uh, but mainly to Angie, I just wanted to congratulate her, because I, in my conversation with Angie the other day, she mentioned she comes from Amherst County. And with that said, I know her family and her friends, and even the community has to be proud once they hear this, that they know someone who has come out of Amherst County, uh, and has moved up, and that I wish her all the best in this position, and I know she will do well. Uh, she's been there for a while, and I know her leadership skills will, will come as an asset to Bob, and that, uh, who knows where you might find yourself in your next venture. So with that, I say keep your sights on the horizon, and many more doors will indeed open to you.
Anybody else, Mr. Pretty?
Um, a, a comment and a question. But first, the comment. Congratulations to both of you. Um, we need two assistant city managers. You can tell this council is very busy, so we have a lot of work to do, and, um, look forward to working with each of you more going forward. Um, I, I do have just a ton of questions around, so I don't know how to discuss this with you personally. Um, in the, uh, unfortunate scenario, um, that you are incapacitated, unable to perform your duties, given the ranking that everyone has, and all of the duties and responsibilities that are allocated through the Virginia law or through our code to the city manager, who will serve in your absence that you can't name one specifically, and then, um, if you could just speak ever so briefly on, what will the process be like as we move forward to select a new police chief?
Sure. Um, and, you know, Tim and I actually spoke about the first question even as recently as today. So when, um, when we actually, back when Sherman Stovall was here, I actually created the deputy city manager, um, position, which took an assistant, turned it into a deputy, and then we changed code to make some specific references to that being automatic. Um, obviously, with this, we're not, we're not currently backfilling at a deputy city manager level, so we will be taking some action, some of which may require action by you all, um, in the near future, or administrative, which makes that clear. Um, and it's not just if I'm incapacitated, it's also if I'm actually unavailable out of, out of, um, out of the area, don't have access to, something needs to be signed or what have you. So we will be taking those, those steps, since it's not as automatic as it was with the, the deputy. I did text, by the way, I did text Clarence earlier today to make sure he knew that it was taking two people to replace him, so I just wanted to make sure that he knew that, so. Um, in the question regarding the, the chief, um, replacement position, so we will follow a process similar to what we've done before, um, which is we will, um, use a search firm, 'cause we will conduct a national search, um, for this. So we will use a search firm. We will, um, use one or more, um, community panels, as we've done before, where we'll assemble a collection of folks that represent a broad spectrum of our community, that will be involved in helping advise me, um, of kind of the pros and cons, strengths and weaknesses of each of the candidates as they work their way through. Um, Chief Roman will obviously be involved in that process as well. Um, as we work our way through it, what we did last time is when we got to the finalist, which of course was Chief Roman in this last case, we had a more, uh, we made available a more open community conversation, um, with that finalist. Uh, it's a little, it's a little awkward, because as you can imagine, um, as folks are competing for these, for these, um, prospects and for these jobs, they don't necessarily, um, want to be out in the community kind of advertising that they're looking for work. But definitely when we get down to that finalist stage, the, uh, the decision ultimately rests with me. I, I have to make the decision as to his hiring, um, and, but that'll be the process that we'll use, and, and once this is confirmed, then I can actually start formally working with Sam, and I'll share with you all kind of what that timeline is, 'cause my goal is to have someone in here, and the time it will take before he actually comes over into the office permanently. So we'll, we'll share that. But in, in a broad sense, that's how we'll approach this.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
No, we just have to say congratulations to you both, and, um, Mr. Powell, that was an excellent job you did with selection. It would create some continuity, so you don't have to really pull your brains out.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm counting on.
That's what you're counting.
All right. Okay. Well, congratulations to both again. All right, now we move down to...
We do need a vote.
I'm not too much over here. Okay.
Okay, we're looking at the clock.
Yeah, we gotta get back in.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Madam Clerk, call the old people, make this legal.
Okay. Ms. Moon Reynolds? With pleasure. Aye. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye, and congratulations.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volison?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Okay, okay. We gotta move on now. Item number 11 is motion of miscellaneous business none. In cry of the comments by the mayor and the members of city council.
I, I can wait. I'll, I'll wait for another time.
Please, please.
Oh, wait. We, we have other business to do.
Well, we got some closed meetings in there, and we gotta get back in here by 7:00.
I'll wait for later.
Uh, you, uh, any vacancies? No vacancies on boards or authorities that we need to discuss this afternoon? So with that, council will stand in recess for closed meetings, and thereafter, we'll reconvene at 7:00. Council's in recess.